Good afternoon. Welcome to the work, School Board Work Session for Wednesday, December 4th. Thank you, everyone who is here in person and viewing online. Ms. Tanner, would you please call the role?
Basine, here.
Clanton.
Present.
Gabriel.
Present.
Jordan.
Here.
Martin.
Present.
Paulson.
Present.
Buffalo.
Present. And as, before we even go any further, I'd like to welcome Mr. Ken Paulson here. He has joined us for his first School Board meeting with us, so everyone say, "Welcome."
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everybody that's here for coming and being involved, and particularly the School Board members, the staff, Dr. Birdsong. I may forget everybody, but not knowing everybody. And then we also have two other distinguished electees who will join us in January. Welcome to both of them. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Paulson.
Hard to take so much time.
Oh, you're welcome.
This is Mike. I just want you to know.
Again, thank you. So, we're going to move on because we do have a very lengthy agenda. We're going to move on to 2.01, School Board Legislative Priorities. Dr. Birdsong?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, Buffalo, Dr. Gabriel, Vice Chair, members of the Board, staff, community members here and viewing. Our first agenda item includes an update from our legislative liaison, Kathy Burcher, and she's here today to provide an update and to help us work through legislative priorities for this school year. So, without further ado.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Dr. Birdsong, Chair Buffalo, members of the Board. Good to see you. Welcome to the newest member of the Board. I'm Kathy Burcher, Advance Strategies. I am the consultant that works with Norfolk Public Schools to advance the legislative priorities of the school division, but also helps you work through what those priorities are and what the top priority should be for the school division. This is a process we've gone through with me now. This is my third session. I can't even believe it, working with you, but with Advance for years before that, with Ron Jordan as well. Lauren Gilbert, who also works on our team, actually had to be in another part of the Commonwealth today, so apologizes she can't be here. A couple of things about this upcoming session, just to kind of level sad. It is a short session, 45 days. The General Assembly and the Commonwealth of Virginia operate on a two-year budget, so we are in fiscal year '25. The budget that was adopted last session covers fiscal year '25 and '26. And so, what we will be doing is amending that biennial budget. And so, when the Governor comes before the Money Committees, December 18th, to present his amendments to the budget, that's the first step towards that process. Important other things to keep in mind, too, a short session, 45 days, amending the budget at the end of this session in the upcoming election. And that's important, and you all know this from having elections here. The House of Delegates, the House of Delegates, all 100 members will be up for election, and so, we anticipate some action related to ensuring that they are advancing those priorities. And also, we'll have statewide elections, so Governor, Lieutenant Governor, and Attorney General in November. So, we anticipate a whole lot of posturing as well during session, as we always see in advance of an election year. So, all that being said, we're going to try to negotiate a budget and prepare for elections in a short session. And so, a couple of things. I did, I have sent along, and I know you have access to a rewrite, kind of a redraft of your legislative program. Again, in my, my third session of working with you all in Advance, in our long time working with you, we really started to think about what makes the most sense when it comes to ensuring that we are telling the story of Norfolk Public Schools. You have a unique story here, an important story, and you have unique requests from the General Assembly to match the student populations you're trying to move forward to student outcomes. And so, really, how do we look at that a little bit differently? And there's some things we took into account as we started to think through, maybe we need to present the document differently. And I know that seems odd to say, "We're going to change the look of the paper," but what the paper does, and you all know this, is it presents who you are and what you care about. And that's the important component here. I mean, so when we looked at it, it was really, again, the unique needs, highlighting the good work. Oftentimes, we fail to do that. I mean, it actually goes to the fourth bullet, which is about removing deficit language. Sometimes we have failed, and not just Norfolk Public Schools, a lot of times, local governments and school divisions fail to talk about their good work or the goals they're setting. And then, in talking about that and the needs we have to achieve those goals, and oftentimes, we leave out the good work and we talk about the deficits we have. And so, trying to remove that language, aligning to your strategic plan, so your documents, documents talk to each other was important, the resources you need, the authority you need. And the other thing that was important is ensuring that you all have a document that you can amend year-to-year and not fully rewrite year-to-year. I think that that's important as well, and hopefully will be a document that is easier for you all to really put your input in and decide, like, "You know, that item, that needs a little bit more. That needs to be elevated to a priority" versus trying to rewrite the document each year. And so, again, when we think about NPS and the work I've done here, I won't read through all of these, but there have been themes that we have seen consistently as we've looked at your legislative program and as we've gone through session, the items that you all have really cared the most about when it comes to supporting your students, your staff, your families, and your communities. They're all captured here, I hope. Certainly, obviously, very broad categories here, but these were some of the themes that really rose to the top in all of our conversations over the years. And also, the work we know is going on at the General Assembly, and I'm going to talk about that one in just a second. And actually, I was just having a conversation about maintenance of buildings. So, and obviously, when we talk about the unique story of Norfolk Public Schools, the infrastructure here is part of that unique story. And so, when we looked at putting together this rewrite, we really looked at the previous program, what were our excesses, what were our challenges with it, and analysis of the strategic plans that we could align those stories. And then, I really took a look at other school divisions to see how are they managing their priorities and their positions in a way that allows their school division to amend the document and then elevate the priorities every year, and then also anticipating what we will see this upcoming session. And I'm hopeful that there's some agreement that we got there in our planning. And part of the unique story, and this is directly from your strategic plan, and it, to me, it just reigned to who you are, what you stand for, and what, what supports and authority you need to continue the good work here. And again, if we're removing deficit language, that's how we want to talk about. You know, again, the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community with highly qualified teachers and staff dedicated to providing a variety of teaching and learning opportunities, that takes a significant amount of resources and supports. And that's the important and unique story of NPS that we tried to capture. A really big piece of this, and a recommendation as a top priority for you all in this session, is the continuing work that is going on around K-12 funding and the findings of the JLRK K-12 Funding Report. And I always make sure every member of the General Assembly knows, and every school division that I know and that I work with knows. Does anyone remember where this study originated?
Yes.
Yes.
Public Schools.
Lynn Wood Lewis.
You all had a legislative priority in 2020 to conduct this study. It was drafted out of work you all did. It was patroned by Senator Monte Mason, part of your delegation. It advanced through the General Assembly, and frankly, after years and years of the General Assembly not wanting to study it, be careful what you study because you're going to get an answer. And they got the answer we knew they would get, right? And so, I always remind folks that, thank you, Norfolk Public Schools, for ensuring that the study moved forward. They have formed a joint committee that has been working on the interim, members of the Education Committees in the House and Senate and Money Committees looking at some of the components of the recommendations. It is a very heavy fiscal lift. There are no surprises in this room. How far the state recognizes they are underfunding K-12, that came as no surprise, I would assume, to anyone in this room. So, as we look to this session, some important pieces of what we know will come from the funding side. We have been hearing about a surplus. I'm going to do air quote "surplus." I did cut my finger during Thanksgiving, so it's polished. For my big fat finger. That surplus is really because we were, we forecast a budget anticipating all sorts of things coming out of the, out of COVID, including a recession which hasn't happened. There are a lot of other reasons, too, but we are, we really tightened up the belt in Virginia and forecast a budget to reflect that. And so, the surplus that exists does allow for a significant amount of one-time funding that will be available for the General Assembly and the Governor to spend. Important, much of it has statutory requirements, has to go into reserves, it has to go into water quality. That's going to happen. We have a very big bill in Virginia for Medicaid, partially because of the expansion during COVID and the unwinding of folks, the coverage that was, that existed during COVID, not as many people fell off the rolls after COVID, after the federal extension, as we anticipated. So, we have a very big bill there. The rest will be left up to the General Assembly and the Governor to spend, but what's important is those are one-time dollars. Those are fiscal year '25 surplus dollars. However, there are still opportunities to address the K-12 Funding Report. And so, prioritizing this for Norfolk, when I think about your strategic plan and your student outcome goals, and I know Mr. Jordan pointed out to me, and I appreciate that, you're going to need additional resources and one-time funding just to start ensuring that you're getting the funding you need to support those students, your students. And so, these are three of the bullets that I recommend as your top priorities moving into session. So, when we think about your strategic priorities, and I'm going to advance, this is so small, but this is directly, these are your student focus outcomes that I know Mr. Jordan sent along, that you all are familiar with. These are very, very linked, especially around accreditation and student performance on the assessments, not just performance and mastery of the assessments, but growth on those assessments and advanced, advanced study diplomas. And so, all items that will require additional resources, i.e., additional funding from the General Assembly and additional staffing funded through the General Assembly as identified in the JLRK report. So, I think that's just a natural link. To achieve your strategic goals and these outcomes, you are going to need action on the JLRK report. To me, that's a top priority for Norfolk. The other one that I recommend as a top priority is addressing assessment and accreditation. Obviously, we have been talking about SOL assessments for a long time here in Virginia. We have the standards, and then we have the assessments that measure them. The Board of Education has been doing significant work over the last three years to update the accreditation and accountability model in Virginia. They are rolling out a new school performance framework, which I'm sure you have heard about, in the upcoming school year. We anticipate, and I say this because we have seen a range of numbers, and we haven't gotten confirmation yet on what the actual numbers look like. There'll be four categories of schools. The two lower ends will be in need of intensive support and off-track. Then, there will be on-track and exemplary or well above. At different points of time, we have heard as many as 60%, as few as 30% of schools will fall into either needs intensive support or off-track. And so, when we talk about assessments and accreditation, to meet those student outcomes that you have in place, you are going, I would highly anticipate, and I know you haven't gotten all the modeling data, I would highly anticipate that many of your schools that were moving forward because of growth, mastery is a bigger component now, are going to fall into categories where they will either need intensive support or be off-track. And so, we need to ensure, and these bullets talk about, first of all, ensuring we are capturing growth, ensuring that we are sending the resources to the schools and students the most in need as identified, if we're going to roll out an accreditation system like this. And then, the other one, the English Language, Language Learner Component, English Language Learners Scores will now count after just three semesters of being in school. And so, think about language acquisition and what that would mean. And so, I recommend this, again, if we look at your strategic goals, your student outcome initiatives, you all really, and my, my counsel to you is to prioritize as your top legislative priorities, funding and the components of the JLRK report, to drive more state dollars to NPS, and to have the General Assembly take a better and deeper look at the impact of any new assessment or accreditation system on schools and ensuring that the supports are in place as we are rolling out or before. There are certainly some debate about delaying. That's, that recommendation is not here, but there is certainly some conversation about the General Assembly looking to delay so we can ensure the supports are there. So, those are my recommendations for your top priorities. From there, everything else becomes the positions. What do you stand for? And this is part of the redraft and rewrite. And what I sent you, and so, I hope it wasn't too convoluted, I took your previous legislative program and ensured every idea was captured in these positions. And you got that long document where everything ended across, ended up crossed out. Every time I captured something in a category from your strategic plan, I went and eliminated it from your previous document, so I could ensure I got everything. It's just categorized differently to align to the components of your strategic plan. And again, I won't through, read through all these, and in fact, these bullets don't capture all of the positions that are in the proposed draft, just the ones that I know are probably the most important to you. And again, when we're talking about equitably supporting every student, every student, so this talks about the at-risk, this talks about ELs and SLICE. SLICE students are students with limited or interrupted formal education. This talks about mental health services, work-based learning, the homework gap, and so, that broadband gap that we've talked about over the years and ensuring that every student has access to high-speed internet. So, again, equitably supporting every student. The next category is around supporting your staff. Compensation, of course, being an important component, competitive compensation for difficult-to-staff positions, not just teaching positions, but including psychologists, school psychologists, pathologists, school counselors. Barrier to entry, including for school bus drivers, we have heard that, and we've talked about the shortage of school bus drivers. So, what can we do from a state perspective to open up doors for you all to have more flexibility there? Incentives, and then additional incentives, support for new teachers and pre-service teachers, those teachers that are preparing to come into the classroom, ensuring they are prepared to come into all classrooms, and so that you have the luxury of having fully-prepared staff that are ready to work with every single one of your students. Grow your own programs, which are important. And then, the other piece that I put in here, just from conversations, there's a lot of talk about affordable housing. And I anticipate the language we will see kind of rise is workforce housing. And so, there used to be programs in Virginia to support educators so that they could live and work in the community, the same community. And so, looking at ways that we could include educators and school staff in any workforce housing programs that we may see. And then, school safety, the next bullet captured some of the top ones here, safe, and ensuring that you all have the authority to continue to decide what resources and environments you all want to create, instead of state mandates, that you all have that authority. Mental health professionals, because as much as we know that we need to support our students in their learning, a big component of school safety is ensuring that we have mental health supports for our students, and social workers, psychologists, behavioral specialists are captured here as well. The other piece that, again, I added this because it is something that has been coming up, and you are an urban school division, is ensuring that you have the authority to keep your walkers and your pedestrians safe, and have some tools and funding possible, available to you that you might want to use to ensure that you can keep traffic flow safe in front of your schools and keep your pedestrians safe. Again, that was one that I, I had seen, and when I talked about evaluating other school divisions, I had seen that in another urban school division's legislative position, and I thought it was something that was worth bringing to you as a draft. And again, local authority. This is, again, the Constitution of Virginia grants the authority to run the schools to the local school division. So, this goes through the opposition to any, any efforts to impede on that authority, including, and we saw some of this last year, you're, the authority of this board on the adoption of curriculum, instructional materials, policy support, and disciplinary actions. We are starting to see, and I know there's a bill filed on the cell phone policies, we are starting to see some school divisions that are talking about implementing discipline-related, including suspension, not here, related to the cell phone policies. We will see legislation in this session that will codify what the Governor put forward in his executive action, but will prohibit the use of suspension. And so, again, making sure we're talking about all of that and maintaining your authority to do what you know is right for your schools. And the last bullet, I think we had 995 bills that added new training components to either school staff, students, and 995 is an exaggeration, but not tremendously. And so, this is, is speaking to limiting that number, but also ensuring that when a decision is made out of the General Assembly, that they are aligned to the timelines of your school division, and so that you all are able to implement that training or those requirements in the timelines that you already have, as opposed of trying to figure out how you're going to make it fit. School construction, again, this has been a big issue for a long time, so this category is specific to those items, the 1% that allow Norfolk to be included in the list, that could raise local taxes by, sales taxes by 1%, ensuring that the standards of quality include a construction component. When it's in the standards of quality, there's a required state funding component. And then, ensuring that you have the opportunity, as you look at improving your school buildings, that you have every freedom and flexibility available to use renewable energy whenever you can. I'm putting that in there as part of your draft because we are seeing an increase in the number of schools that are taking advantage of legislation that was passed a few years ago to install solar panels and that kinds of thing, to not just for energy efficiency, but for cost reduction. And there are some things currently in the law that can create some issues for schools. We've seen that in a couple of school divisions in Northern Virginia, where they had an unexpected cost at the end because of some requirements for some additional funding to do that kind of last-mile work that they didn't anticipate. And then, accessible to all, and so, these are your opposition statements. These are very unchanged from your previous, your previous legislative program, but I captured under this whole idea of, again, it's removing the deficit. We're just not going to stand in opposition. We are committed to providing an equitable, high-quality education, and so, therefore, we would oppose these things. And that's the framing. So, everything that you would normally see, grading systems or scales, to rating systems, unfunded mandates, vouchers, anything that would remove public funding, anything that would reduce, and remember, we saw this two sessions ago, there was a proposal to reduce and eliminate some of the sales tax on groceries and not replace that funding that came back to local school boards. We were able to put that back, both in code and budget. And then, any efforts to mandate the placement or banning of books. That was one that we've added in the last few years, as we saw some action in those categories. And that's actually, I won't go into your, I just wanted to kind of wrap it. Like, that's the proposal as far as the draft and rewrite. I'm not going to surprise you with any of this. Your delegation, you have two members of the Virginia Senate on your, in your delegation, Senator Bill Steph and Senator Angela Williams Graves. In the House, you have four members, actually, let me go back, a couple of things. It's important to note that you, you do not have a member in the Senate who serves on the Education and Health Committee. That's important for a lot of reasons. Lot of, again, Senate committees are smaller. It's important because a lot of times, your delegation won't see a bill until it comes from the committee and it's on the floor. And so, that's where, we are on the ground, making sure they know your positions on bills, but that's where there is real value in ensuring you're having conversations with your delegation about bills they may not see until they go to the floor, and we are ensuring that we are flagging them for it.
Kathy, if I can just, is Senator Lucas the closest senator that we have that's on education?
Uh, I'd have to think about who's on education. I would assume so, because that's, I think so, but I'll confirm for you. It seems that way. I don't have the full education list in front of me. And she's a champion, for sure, of, of K-12 funding, which we're super grateful for. And obviously, Senator Lucas is also the Chair of the Senate Finance, Finance and Appropriations Committee. She's very powerful in the Senate. And then, on the House, in good news, Delegate Askew does serve on the Education Committee and is very actively engaged in reviewing education legislation as a part of this committee. All of them are actively engaged, but it's just important to note that when legislation first appears and has its first hearing in a subcommittee, the first person that will have the opportunity to react to it will be Delegate Askew. And so, ensuring that the whole delegation knows, but that, that he in particular is, is very prepared to represent Norfolk. So, what comes next? We have a draft in front of you, edits, feedback. I did, I did incorporate, and I have changes, I didn't send, I have copies, but I get, this is a public meeting, so I'll hold on. I did incorporate feedback from Mr. Jordan and have elevated the two recommended priorities to the top. And so, it turned it into more of a legislative package for you all, because that would be my next recommendation and the edits that I would make. I sent those along, if you, if you wanted to see them, I have paper copies as well. Adopting of the final program. Obviously, tomorrow, we'll have Take Your Legislator to School Day. The other piece, too, is we want to help in any way possible to start building out any communications you need. We are hopeful that this approach of telling Norfolk's story and presenting your legislative program as a place of, "We are doing good work. We, we need support from the state to continue to ensure that our students, families, communities have the resources they need." We'll help inform your delegation, speak more, even more effectively on your behalf and your coalition partners as well. Building support, again. And then, the Governor's Budget Announcement on December 18th is really kind of the next big item. He has mentioned that he intends to put at least $50 million one-time money into that category of schools that will need either intensive support or are off-track in the upcoming school year. So, we'll see what else there is in the Governor's Plan for K-12 as we look at his amended budget. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Board members, you've heard the presentation. Are there any questions?
Senator Lucas is on the Education and Health Committee.
Oh, Education and, was that, I'm sorry.
Education and Health?
Yes, Education. The House separates Education and Health into two separate committees. The Senate combines them into one, which makes for a very robust docket every time they make.
Yeah, I can imagine. Anyone else? Ms. Basine?
Yeah. Thank, thank you so much. I like the way that you have laid out the legislative program this year, and I think it makes total sense, and I appreciate the inclusion of our, of our outcomes goals as well, because, so, as you're presenting a picture that is unique to NPS, you know, the issues that are unique to NPS, and we have the goals in front of us, and, you know, you've itemized areas, including, you know, around special education and our English Language Learners. Do you anticipate any specific bills based on what came out of the recommendations in the education report, specific to those populations where we need to, we need greater investment in, you know, it's easy to say, support these programs, but what those programs should, what they are, and, you know, even in terms of language support, like devices, and, you know, things, things that we need to ensure that we're providing an equitable education for, for every student, particularly those two subgroups that we see also in our data, that, that really require, you know, highly-trained staff, language support programs, you know, whatever, whatever the research shows is evidence-based to improve outcomes for those students. So, I was just wondering if you're anticipating anything from the General Assembly?
Absolutely. Chair Buffalo, yes. To your question, we actually saw legislation last year. We called it the Omnibus Bill, which is not normal, and normal, you hear this in the federal government, the omnibus bill where they throw in the kitchen sink. We have done that with the JLRK recommendations the last few sessions. So, we, we will have an omnibus bill again this year in the Senate, and I anticipate in the House as well, that will capture all of the JLRK recommendations and the full cost associated. What happened last session with that great big omnibus bill is it stayed an omnibus bill, and they kept, the General Assembly kept amending it until they got to the piece they were able to afford, and then they funded that piece. And so, what they funded last year included improvements to EL staffing ratios. The at-risk add-on changes were also included, but captured in budget as opposed to in code, which, putting it in code is something that we have been talking about for a few years and was included in the JLRK recommendations. So, I, we will see that great big huge bill. I also anticipate, and I've been trying to nail down who the patrons are on these things, components of the JLRK recommendations also. So, instead of the big omnibus bill, we will see bills specific to specific pieces of it, including, I would anticipate additional improvements to EL staffing ratios. We had a, they made some changes last year, and they put a delayed enactment on it, so school divisions didn't have to fully staff. And so, I would not be surprised to see, try to see that extended. I understand it is very challenging to hire additional EL staff, but at the same time, if you delay it, the state funding isn't there to help you fund them. We have seen also, when it comes to devices and other, outside of just the staffing for EL students and other students with special needs, we have been, we have seen, and I anticipate we will see again, from a couple of advocacy groups, specific device and other technology improvements for schools and the funding for to support the kinds of students that need, whether it's hearing or visual support through some of the modern technology that's available now to really help those students. So, I would anticipate all of that. We do track all of those bills, and that's when, and I know it's an unfortunate Friday, or sometimes Saturday, depending on, on how long it takes me to get the report out to you. That is an unfortunate email in many ways you get from me, because we track on your behalf. Last year, I think it was 380 bills. All of them are captured in there, and it is a lot. But I will, I am certainly, particularly knowing your, and I know your focus and your desire to really look at that, I will do my very best to highlight those as they come up in the report for you, so that you can see them there. But we do track all of those, and I'll keep you updated. I would anticipate an extraordinary number of bills, particularly in the House, related to K-12, because remember, I said an election is up in November, and everyone supports public education.
Everyone.
And so, we will see everyone position themselves. But we'll have to see at the end of the day, remember, a lot of one-time funding. We'll have to see at the end of the day what resources they're going to drive.
Okay. And so, to, to your point, so, you know, I know, so, the omnibus bill was broken down into specific pieces, and I find it interesting when they, they break it down. So, for instance, like the staffing ratios. You can't reduce the staffing ratios if you don't have the qualified staff to fill those positions. So, it's like, how, where's the legislation around creating a pipeline, for instance? And, you know, it's like- And, you know, it's like, we're starting with legislation here when we haven't figured out the root of getting to here. And so I'd like to see legislation really think about that piece, like, starting from where you need to start in order to get to that, the ideal place that we need to be to serve our students. And so, you know, I look forward to reviewing that with, when you send us all those emails that we get, I know, with all the bills in it. And the same thing around special education, you know, so that's, I'm trying to think.
And if I'm, Chair, if I may, we did see special education legislation last year, some additional dollars, but the Commission on Youth is in the process of looking at the dispute resolution process, for instance. We did, that bill initially started with a statewide IEP system. It didn't go there quite yet, because there are school divisions that develop their own. And so I anticipate that Delegate Coenner had the bill in the House. I know she's coming back with something this year related to, not necessarily additional staff related to special education, but streamlining IEPs and ensuring, and it's always interesting when you come to an area of the Commonwealth where there's a higher percentage of military families, that would allow those IEPs to more easily move with a student in a system and format that is usable by school divisions and other part of the Commonwealth. And so I would anticipate something like that coming back as well. Part of the issue with staffing right now is the J-Lark report. One of the big findings of the J-Lark report was, Virginia is one of a handful of states that use a staff funding formula, method, to send state dollars. And so a big part of the work of this joint subcommittee is figuring out, should we do something different? Should we look at students, should we look at a student funding formula? And what unfortunately that has done is given them a reason to put the brakes on staffing models and improving staffing models until they figure that out. But again, I anticipate in EL, EL staffing is going to be addressed again, I would anticipate this session. It would not surprise me to see special education, yes. But there is, there has seemed to be this pause around, let's let that joint subcommittee that's working on Norfolk's report, as we like to call that, J-Lark report, figure out how they want to fund this first. The problem there is, that's a years-long process. I think Tennessee, we keep hearing about Tennessee, they did it in a year. I'm not sure Tennessee would jump up and down and say, we did it great, and we want to get it right. You know, that's an important component.
So based upon what you just said, do you anticipate that they won't carefully look at removing the, or eliminating the cap for support positions?
So, Chair Buffalo, so the, I, they have, over the last few sessions, been doing that. They have been, again, recessionary cuts, and the support staff cap is probably the biggest one, that has the greatest dollar-to-dollar impact for school divisions. There is a series of them that still exists that put a real, that really tap down the funding that comes to all school divisions, but in particular Norfolk. I would anticipate, again, one-time dollars, they're going to, they are going to work, and they have been working on addressing the support staff cap. What they did last session was actually apply a staffing ratio in the code versus, we used to just, we used to just fund it through the budget. So they have started putting a staffing ratio in the code to send additional dollars down. I know there will be legislation to move that further. It will be interesting to see, how do they look at it from, do we have one-time dollars we can send to kind of fill the gap? Or are we going to continue to look at staffing formulas for support staff just so that we can get that fixed? Because it's been around for so long, and school divisions have rightfully been asking for a reversal of these recession cuts. And so I know that that's the vaguest answer, but there's a lot of components going on. And support staff cap, without question, and a lot of it has to do for the work that school boards across the Commonwealth have been doing, pushing this issue, superintendents have been doing across the Commonwealth, parents have been doing. They have finally heard us, 15 years later, 10, 12. So I anticipate work on it. I just don't yet know where it will land.
But that's not a best practice, to use one-time funding for positions?
Correct. Staffing, one-time funding for staffing.
Not going to help.
Yeah, and what we have found pretty consistently, and the General Assembly did two sessions ago, they set aside $418 million in one-time funds for schools. That's a tough one for schools to utilize in a way that will really drive your student outcome goals, because that's staffing, that's some devices, that's technology that have an ongoing cost. So the General Assembly, that's the other trick here, is they recognize that one-time dollars are not the kinds of dollars that school divisions, trust me, will take them. But, and certainly, they can hold us over, but it's not something, and when school divisions use those kinds of dollars for things with recurring costs, then the General Assembly said, we told you they would do that. And so it's a careful balance, for sure. So this is one we will watch really, really carefully, and an important one to make sure we're talking with the delegation about.
Pessine?
Yep. Can I piggyback on?
Yeah.
So that, another question I had was going to, was going to be around with the expiration of all the ESER funds, and, you know, which we've had for the last few years that allowed school divisions to do a number of things to improve academic performance. How is the General Assembly examining the need, the current need, based on what we've been given for the last few years?
Chair Buffalo, that again is all tied up in the J-Lark Funding Formula Subcommittee, and they're looking, what they're trying to figure out is what is the true cost of educating students in Virginia? And that includes, what improvements did we make in some of our instructional components? Because we had the additional federal dollars that are now gone, but we know were effective. And so, yeah, that's a big piece of the overall cost. And interestingly, when we look at K-12 dollars, how the state, how the state kind of takes the budget apart when they look at rebenchmarking, they actually included all of those federal dollars into the initial calculation. And so they had to pull them out, it's called the federal deduct, they put them all in, and then they take out from what the state has to pay, they take out the federal component. The federal deduct was enormous this year because of ESER, and it will be, or this rebenchmarking will be enormous next rebenchmarking. And then they figure out, what does the state have to, left to pay? But in good news, they have the dollar figure and the components of what was involved in the full cost for those years when we did have ESER dollars. And that is something, and other states are doing that. The good news is, Virginia's not alone in this. Every state in the country has been through this. And so tapping in, and that's one of the things the committee is doing, is tapping into national experts on this and try to figure out, how do we ensure that if we're really going to look at the true costs, we're ensuring that every dollar of that true cost that helped kids, including the federal dollars, are included in that calculation? I am not saying they're going to get there, because as you know, that was an extraordinary investment, and the J-Lark report probably captures some of it, because it talks about some of the things we know we funded with ESER funds, but not all of it. It's a, it's a, I don't know that it's a cliff, because I think school divisions were really good in managing those dollars. It's, it's a, the first, it's the first dip in the roller coaster, though, we'll say that. Not quite a cliff.
Follow-up to that one, because I think I asked this question before, did Dr. Birdsong, with the ESER federal dollars that were, we knew were going to sunset, we, in our last budget, the one that we just passed, had already begun to make preparation for that, correct?
We were proactive in doing that for this year.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
And I will also say, if I remember correctly, and apologize, do you know, you all included as part of your legislative package, last year or the year before, what you spent, what you were spending, those categories, I think they were even little buckets on your one page, you gave your General Assembly members, your delegation, because that's an important piece of this, too, is so that they can articulate what you were spending your money on. Not to mention how, and I, not just the reports I'm hearing about just today, but the volume of reports that had to be sent to the Department of Education about how you were spending your ESER dollars. All of that data exists for your delegation. I actually had a colleague up in another school division that printed it out and brought it to his delegation, and they were each like that. I mean, I'm, so you all have volumes of data on how you spent that, and so we have that, certainly have that information for any member of the delegation or General Assembly who has questions.
Chair Buffalo?
Yep, Mr. Jordan?
Just a couple of things. First, thank you for the reformatting and for integrating the student outcome-focused goals. So one, just the language, student outcome-focused goals, make sure that we're consistent with that description, because it has student-focused outcome goals, and student outcome-focused goals. And on the, on page three, where it lists the strategic goals, I was sitting here looking, I think there's one missing, which is the student excellence description. So you don't show the categories, but the descriptions align with the student excellence, workforce resources, community, safety, and climate. So in those four bullets, it should be five. And then perhaps we could consider putting the student outcome goals first, and then the strategic goals second, as the outcome goals is what the board has prioritized, and the strategic planning efforts is how to go about achieving it. But other than that, I think it's a very good document. The other thing I just want to share, I was at the BSBA conference and was doing a session with Roanoke. And so what they did was, they had this little card, and then on their QR code, you can go to their website and then get a single-page description for how we have these documents. So just moving forward in terms of what we have that we can hand out, I just, I just thought that was a nice way that they did, that they did that.
And Chair Buffalo, I'm happy to, and certainly if I've eliminated, and it may have been in my cutting and pasting, so I apologize for that, I will ensure that all of the bullet components from the strategic plan are incorporated there. And I am happy at the will of the board, to take that order in any way. It does sound like there is agreement on including both the strategic goals and the student goals, but I'm happy to put them in any order possible.
Go around the table, Mr. Jordan's recommendation to put the goals, school board goals first, then the strategic, and how they're going to do, get to those. Yes? Dr. Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I will make that change. And then the one thing that I will mention, and it was part of our, my bullets around, you know, moving forward, how do we advance this? And one of them was, again, I know every school division is different, and the superintendent, well, he's, he's no longer, he's not the superintendent, he is their government relations and 87 other jobs that he has, Alan Seibert, who worked on ensuring that they could come up with a document like that. Their communications team took the legislative program and did that. And so, not certain of what the capacity is here, but if we think about telling the story of Norfolk, and then those two focused priorities, everything else positions, you QR code to the positions, and then you put the two priorities on a card like that, that is certainly, everyone is showing the Roanoke City Public Schools card, and I just cleaned out a bag, and I had eight of them in my bag. And so it is, it is a really, in my opinion, a useful, helpful tool to hand out, and the QR code that would link to. Again, a public-facing document that tells the story of Norfolk Public Schools is always helpful.
And we've done that in the past. We've had the one-pager, which talked about our needs and what we've done in the years past and what our asks were. And that, that document right there with nice shiny glossy QR code, that's just 2.0.
Right. Well, I will make the changes to the document, and it sounds like you all agree, or there is agreement, it seems to me, but I will leave that to you, around the prioritization, the top legislative priorities being K-12 funding and the assessments and accountability and the rest be compositions, is my recommendation, and I'm happy to do the will of, whatever is the will of the board.
Yeah, sounds good.
Well, I look forward to seeing everyone tomorrow. Right in early. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to 3.01, Dr. Birdsong.
Yes, thank you, Chair Buffalo. We have some good news to share today. While we're making progress, there's still some areas of focus that will require our attention. Today, Dr. Poe will provide an update on proficiency levels as it relates to reading and mathematics, and we have some great data on closing gaps between certain subgroups of students while increasing the proficiency of all. So, Dr. Poe?
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong, and good evening, Madam Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, Dr. Birdsong, community members, administration, everybody else. I'm here to share tonight, school board goal four, measure 4.1. So as a reminder, the actual goal is focused on reading and mathematics and reducing the gaps to be no greater than 10% by the, by the 27, 28, it's accountability year, that language will change with this goal as well, once we figure all that out. And specifically tonight with measure 4.1, we're going to focus on our reading data, and the next board meeting will focus on our math data. So the reading data for measure 4.1, there are two areas. We're looking at students within the black, student with disability, our socioeconomic status, English learners, and Hispanic subgroup scoring proficient on the STAR reading assessment. And you'll see here, we've mapped out from where we ended last spring to the goals this spring. And that's the areas for each of the subgroups to improve so that we can reduce gaps, because part of this goal, as we recall, is that we don't want to see decreases in scores, we want to see everybody rising while we're closing the gaps. That was a big, a big focus point of this goal. So as Dr. Birdsong said, there's a lot of good news to share. The data is really starting to show, well, the majority of the gaps improved within the proficiency and urgent intervention bands between subgroups. Scores also showed improvements with all subgroups with improving, while improving the gap. So we are seeing that movement that we're looking for. With students in the following subgroups, improvements were seen in both proficiency scores, raising them while lowering urgent intervention scores and moving them out of urgent intervention, while seeing the gaps move closer to 10%. And those subgroups were our black, with white, SES and non-SES, and our EL and non-EL groups. So all those groups in both areas saw growth everywhere and closure of the gaps. And I'm sorry, I didn't scroll down through all of our graphs. This is the one where we minimized the graph size so we could, we could get them all on here on separate graphs. And then here was the urgent intervention that we've reviewed that as well. So what's going well? Separated out into two areas, one, the proficiency data, the gaps between students in the black and white subgroups, SES and non-SES subgroups, and EL and non-EL subgroups, all improved from the spring data. Additionally, all subgroups saw improvement in the fall STAR reading proficiency rates as compared to spring 2024 data. This shows students are starting the year off with stronger proficiency rates than how last year was ended, so we're beginning better than we ended last year. Within the urgent intervention data, the gaps between the students, the student subgroups, black and white, SWD and non-SWD, SES and non-SES, EL and non-EL, saw decreases from the spring 2024 results to the fall 2024 results, which is wonderful. And all student subgroups realized decreases in the percentage of students in the urgent intervention band. So I want to say that one more time, that when you look at the numbers here, every single student group saw decreases in the urgent intervention band from the spring to the fall. So we've raised students from last spring to now and seen, seen the differences in the scores. So that's some exciting news.
Three clap.
Thank you very much. You know, and always, you know, like Dr. Birdsong said, there's always work to be done, continuously work to be done. So, you know, some of the areas that aren't going so well with the proficiency data, the gaps between the students with disability and non-student with disability students increased, we saw an increase there. And additionally, all the gap, although the gap between the Hispanic and non-Hispanic students increased, it is still within our range, it's below 10%, that gap is, but we did see some growth in that gap, which is, which is common when you're talking about that 10% range, to see some fluctuations up and down. With the urgent intervention data, the gap between the students in the Hispanic and non-Hispanic subgroups increased, and now that one's slightly over 10%. I believe that one ended up at 10.9%, 10.8? Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. And then I'm not going to read through all these, these are similar, since we're on reading, we've talked a lot about reading with our previous goals with the grade three and with students specifically in the black subgroup. And these were areas of the previous action steps in yellow, and then the green were what we've done. These are, these are similar to what have already been reported, because they were, they were all similar compared to reading. Now with next steps specifically for, for our gap groups, we are focusing again on the reading plans that target interventions. And as you may recall, those are required this year for students in K through three, and the anticipated requirement for next year's students in K through eight. However, to kind of get on that road already, we've started that in grade six as well. So we're doing reading plans in K through three in grade six, and that is an additional workload for our reading specialists and our teachers, I just want you to know. But it should be good focused work on how we're doing the reading plans. Reading specialists will provide families with targeted resources to support the individual student reading goals at home. Uh, reading specialists will provide families with targeted resources to support the individual student reading goals at home. Will monitor master and intervention schedules to ensure that interventions complement rather than replace core literacy instruction. Um, there's continued professional development for intervention providers. So really focusing in our special education teachers and, and our paras, our ESL teachers, our tutors that we've hired on our evidence-based literacy interventions, so SIPs, Lexia, um, Core Five and Power Up, so that they're very familiar on the use of those. Continuing to analyze and disaggregate Lexia data to monitor achievement gaps and provide timely interventions. And the English office will monitor evidence-based interventions by conducting coaching and feedback cycles with teachers trained in the SIPs program. Uh, monthly PD sessions for teachers on evidence-based literacy strategies and high-quality instructional materials. Monitor reading specialist support logs to increase modeling and team teaching opportunities, strengthen teacher capacity and enhancing HQIM implementation. So that, I just wanna say on that one, just, you know, really focusing on, you know, getting down to the nitty-gritty of, of what the reading specialists are doing to support teachers and students in the buildings, and making sure those logs are filled so that we're on top of that. Um, and then the English office will analyze unit test data emphasizing strand mastery and subgroup performance to identify priority supports and guide instructional planning. So again, using that, that data on the daily to really focus on where our students' needs are. Um, and then collaborating with learning support to provide professional development on specialty design instruction, to scaffold tier-one instructions for students with disabilities, and assist schools with developing, implementing, and monitoring of comprehensive school support plans. Um, so I know this was, you know, one of our longer ones because of all the graphs, but, um, that's the conclusion of measure four point one.
Hey, school board members, you've heard the rift, um, monitoring report from Dr. Poe, Dr. Birdsong. You have any questions? Okay, we'll go, Dr. Gabriel, Ms. Basin, did I see your hand? And Mr. Jordan.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Buffalo. Um, Dr. Poe, so we're, um, in December now, and based upon, um, the assessments that our students are taking, what are, what do the rest of the check-ins look like for reading, um, and I guess math, if you don't mind, going into twenty twenty-five and leading up to the SOLs?
So, you know, our, we are now looking at unit assessment data, we're looking at Lexia data. Um, and, you know, we're, we're really getting down to the standard level now with teachers and focusing on the, the STAR data that came in, um, and matching that to where we're seeing strengths and weaknesses on the unit assessments. Uh, it, it's hard division-wide to say, y- you know, where we definitely are. STAR is really our next benchmark that we'll see in the, in the winter testing module. Um, but we are seeing stronger readers, um, this fall than we've seen past fall with our data. And math is, is, um, we haven't seen quite as much of a spike, but we are seeing growth.
Do you anticipate, and I know there was a, a calendar that, that went out with the assessments, about two more assessments before the students go in to take their SOLs?
So we'll definitely have the winter STAR, and then the statewide winter growth assessment will, will be out there. And we'll have a few more unit assessments, um, as well as the, you know, daily formative that teachers offer, as well as the, you know, for reading-specific, the Lexia modules that students will go through. And then for our, our intervention services with SIPs, they'll get even more data.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure. And for, sorry, for younger ones, we'll have VOWs winter assessment as well.
Okay.
Ms. Basin?
Um, yeah, and Mr. Jordan, if you'd like to go, I asked a lot of questions
Go for it.
On the last agenda topic. So with this, I, I thought, uh, appreciate the presentation. I thought it was really interesting if we could go back to the proficiency, um, the comparison going from spring twenty twenty-two to twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. And then seeing this big, uh, uh, what seemed to be a, a much greater improvement for the fall of twenty-four, twenty-five. What do you attribute that, um, that improvement to?
I, I think, you know, my answer's gonna be similar to last time, is just really consistency of, of implementation of, um, our, our tier-two, tier-three supports that we've put in place for, for, this is our fourth year now, like using Lexia, our fourth year using the SIPs curriculum. Our students, you know, in third, fourth, and fifth grade now, all had opportunity to work with, uh, literacy tutors in K, you know, K-one, two, um, because they've, they've just moved up. So the consistency of implementation of programming, I think, is huge in what we're seeing. The, the, I think we were more consistent at, uh, having less turnover in teachers from last year to this year. And, you know, all those things, I think, benefit our students.
Okay, and, um, so, so then, um, I think some of the, some of, so there are no fall targets here. So similar to last month when we reviewed, or the last monitoring session, you know, we talked about that in the fall targets, and I know there was some exchange between, um, that last session and, and this one about how we could develop those fall targets based on historical data. Have you had a chance to look at that, or have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, so we, for next fall, we'll definitely do it, but this, for the, for the STAR assessments right now, I think it's kinda, it's, it's called data snooping. We've seen all the data, so we, we don't really wanna create targets when you've seen the data. So next fall, we'll have fall targets in place.
Okay. All right, and then I, I, I have two things that I want to, um, ask questions around, but I also wanna make sure everybody has a chance to speak, so I can, um, I can either come back or if it's okay. Okay. Um, so students with disabilities, so that group did not see the improvements that other groups saw, right?
I mean, they saw a five percent gain.
I mean, they saw, right, some, but even
They're still not at the level of the other student group, subgroups.
Right. So what do you, what do you think that that suggests? I mean, 'cause we know, like, so when I look at the, you know, what's going well, what's not going well, and I know it probably sound like a broken record, but it's, I really want to get to a point where we're understanding, the board is understanding, um, what actions are successful. So what actions are really, uh, advancing outcomes for students and what are not. And so with students with disabilities, uh, in particular, where we, you know, in, even among other goal, in our other goals, we're, we're, that is a group where we're not seeing, um, the, the same level of improvement or, or movement. So it really begs the question of what barriers are in place? Are we looking at compliance? Are we looking at, um, training of, of our staff? Are we looking at, um, you know, the IEPs? Like what, what are we, I guess, doing to really strengthen that, um, teaching and learning for that particular subgroup?
So I, I, two comments on that. One, you know, I think when you're looking at the raw data going twenty-one point seven to twenty-six point five from spring to fall, percentage-wise, I do think we're seeing good growth with our students with disabilities. We have a lot longer, a lot further to go with our stu- which we, which we've known. I, I think one of the things that's important is to have a continued focus with instruction and the instructional model with our special education teachers. Because we, we can focus on compliance and compliance and compliance, and we can make sure that all accoun- all accountability and, and everything on the IEP is, is perfect, which needs to be done. I have no, not saying it doesn't need to be done. However, if, if we only focus on compliance, then no one will know how to really implement that instructionally. So the focus with not only special ed teachers, but core teachers on specially-designed instruction. Um, this year, the specific target we've had with, um, with really merging professional development with our, um, special education staff and our curriculum instruction staff to make sure that they're all on the same page. I, I think the more we focus on what instructional supports do we have in place to meet the accommodations is important. And I think we're starting to see that more and more, um, especially with a lot of the collaboration that's, that's been going on this fall and then coming into this school year.
Thank, thank you, and thank you for the report. I'm, I'm still struggling a little bit with just trying to follow the, the trend analysis. So first wanna go back. What was, what was it, your, can you repeat again the terminology that you use for, uh, why we don't, why we didn't do the fall targets?
Sure. So, um, the, since we had, and we had talked about this last meeting, why, why we didn't do them was, was because we were, last year, I don't know that the targets were set properly. And we knew coming into it, if we saw the fall data, we could know if our annual target was set properly. This, this, um, fall, the reason we didn't do them now on this one coming to the board, um, even though it was, you know, when we talked about fall targets, is, um, I talked to our statistician, Greg Williams, he said it's called data snooping.
Snooping?
Yeah, he said, if you know the data and you're making targets, then, you know, there could be concerns around creating targets after you know the data.
Say it one more time for me.
Data snooping.
No, I mean, the, you say if you know the
So if you know the data for the fall data already, and then we're making a fall target, you know
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I get that.
So that's why, that's why there's no fall target.
We're cheating.
Right, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to, is determine the, the ability to have some type of, uh, estimate or predictive analysis based upon trend data. So the way the report is, it, it's, it's hard for me to, to follow. So for example, we, on the charts, we're mapping
Spring to spring.
Well, yeah, so spring to spring is the, is the goal. Then our conversation is about spring to fall. So what I'm trying to see is, you know, at least on the, on the interim basis, fall to fall, winter to winter, spring to spring. So for, for example, 'cause I pulled up the report that you gave us in June, and that's how, the best way I could try to follow it for myself. So in, for last year, our, you mentioned the target. So we had a spring target of fifty-two percent. So we, if I'm reading it correctly, if we started off with, um, I'm just looking at the first line for black students. We started off with the twenty-two, twenty-three results of thirty-nine point eight. We had a target of fifty-two percent. We, our actual was forty-two point six percent. So then, when we look at this current report, we, so we didn't make the target that we set. But when I look at the graphs, it's hard for me to see the line of how our actual performance is against our targets that we set. And then we did set that fifty-two percent, uh, spring target, and I guess just by chance, 'cause it's, I assume it's just by chance, that the fall actual ended up being about fifty-two percent. But when you are looking at, um, student performance in a, uh, roll-up like this, isn't there some way of being able to say, based upon the last three years, four years, whatever it's been, this is what we, uh, are seeing in the trend? And as a result of that, prior to the students taking the fall assessment, being able to have a indication of what a fall target would be based upon their historical testing patterns and whatever other types of, uh, data input you would, you would consider. So I, I understand why it's not on the report now. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is why we wouldn't be able to have fall targets, um, calculated based upon last year's, or based upon the trend analysis prior to getting to monitoring the, the report.
So in the future, we will do that, and that is possible to do with trend data. But again, the, like I said at the last meeting, the reason why we didn't do that this year, because last year, every time we presented the data, we talked about where the target's set properly. And, you know, you know, do we feel like we, you know, that, that, that we set something that was able to be accomplished or not able to be accomplished? So seeing the fall data gave us a better eye on our annual targets that were already preset. So, you know, the annual targets haven't changed
Correct.
Here, so, you know, really looking at that to see, did we need to have a discussion around our annual targets, you know, based off the fall targets? But when we saw the fall results, we were like, no, we're good. We, we feel really comfortable with our data this fall. Um, and then really on this one, when you're looking at the graphs, Mr. Jordan, as a reminder, this, this, these graphs are really looking at the gaps.
Right.
You're not looking at any performance, you're looking at the gaps decreasing.
Right, 'cause that was, actually, that was gonna be my other comment, that I think, because in the, in the goal, and I can't remember what the interim goals are, but in the overarching goal, there's, uh, two pieces to it, right? So one is the closure of the gap, and two is not seeing any of the groups go down. But like you, like you just mentioned, on the chart, it's showing the, the gap analysis, but I don't think we have a chart, unless I missed it, that's showing
We don't.
Okay.
We, but, so we have it in the table, and purposely, that's why we put this in the table, so we could see the, the data live in the table. We just don't have another graph with it. And when we tried to graph it, then your percentages are so different, the, the graphs get confusing when you, when you try to put, like, all of them on one graph. So if, if, if it's the will of the board, you know, we can add, it would be another two pages of graphs to show the, the scores of all the subgroups.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I just think that, at least for me, when I'm looking at it, it's hard to, to follow it. And, and so if there is some way of, of charting it, um, without having what you described, I think it would be some value to us, because if I look at, uh, so let's look at the, the first chart on the, on the left. So we have the thirty-four point six black-white gap for spring twenty-two, twenty-three. Then we have the thirty-one point eight percent, which is for twenty-three, twenty-four. Then we switch to this fall point. But then the, the dotted line to the right, those are supposed, those are our targets. But there's, are you, why isn't it not some way that the target that starts with the first point of winter twenty-four, twenty-five, why couldn't that point go backwards so that we would be able to see the
So in the, so in the future, there will be a target here. So when we report out in the winter, this line will continue, the solid line will continue, and the dotted line will stay. And then in the spring, the same thing, so the solid line will continue, and we'll have a double line here. We'll have the dotted line and a solid line, which will show you, you know, so right now, if you look at our trend, we're trending towards the eighteen percent.
Right.
Um, our, our trend line looks good. Um, and as we go on, then as we get, so when I present the winner, the winner data, we'll see is our dot below or above our target for the winner. And, and I think that's what you might be talking about, Mr. Jordan, is when, when we'll see two lines.
Okay, maybe I'll, I'll try to work on it. Maybe I'll try to graph it out, what I, what I'm trying to visually understand and see. Is, do you consider this, um, on track, off track, or, or what? 'Cause there's no indicator there for the
So, yeah, there's no indicator since we didn't have a fall target, but I would say, I would say, based on the number of gaps that have closed and the improvements, that we are on track, for, for the most part. You know, I think it separates by, by group in some instances.
The, the other thing I, I noticed when I was looking at the June report and this report, in the June report for the gap for black-white, we showed it as red, I think because the, uh, the white student performance did not improve. And then on this one, we're showing it as, as yellow. Is there
So the yellow for the, the, the gap for the yellow was because we, we did not make the goal, but our gap improved.
Right, but, but again, the gap improved in part because of the performance of black students, but then also because of the slight drop with white students. And I thought, what I was saying earlier, I thought we were trying to say that, that, that would what I was saying earlier, I thought we were trying to say that, that that wouldn't be the case, that all the, all the groups would either at least stay the same or grow. But if one went down, while one went up, we could see a gap close, but the gap could be closing because of a drop for a particular student group.
So in the future, I can add the color coding to the scores as well.
I have a question. Is it because it's only point one percent, or point-
Well, I mean, it's, they didn't drop by much, but Mr. Jordan's point is they saw decline, instead of, instead of moving up or staying the same. And the, the, so that should, the seventy-four point four should be red, because that went down.
Yeah, and it, and- Yeah, and it's not, right, and it's not so much to me about the color, it's just to give the, the board the sense of, you know, like we said, you can have gap closures by, Adele, you're running slower, since you run faster than I do, right? Right.
We know you're a fast runner.
Yeah, you could, you could, you could slow down, you could slow down, and I could close the gap with you. Or you could still be running the same, and I can speed up and close the gap.
Maybe.
And so when we had that, we had the conversation, that was why we had the other piece, that what we're trying to say is, we want to make sure that all the student groups are improving, hopefully, or at least staying flat.
It's not statistically significant.
I'm, I'm not, I agree. I just, I just think whatever we do, I just want us to be consistent with it, that's all.
But it, but I think what I'm hearing is that it is a guard-
Bless you. It is what?
Whether or not if it's, it's a guardrail we put in place that-
Part of the goal.
Yeah, it's part of the goal. So whether or not it's a small, minute, or whatever else, just to be true and transparent, it, that's what we're doing.
And then the, the other question I had, on the recommendations of, around coaching support, can you remind us, I know we've asked about this before, but there's, there's allocation of coaching support by school? And how, can you just remind us, in terms of the allocation of coaching support, what that, what that looks like?
Sure, so, every elementary school has a reading specialist. And the reading specialist's primary job is to coach, and then to work, you know, a small group of students from time to time, and to follow up with the reading plans.
When there's some other type of coach or resource that-
So we have twelve instructional coaches-
Instructional coaches.
That we paid for out of Title I, and we pay for, I think, one or two out of Title II, so that we didn't have to only lock them to Title I schools. And those coaches, if they're at an elementary, they're split between two schools. And again, that's for instructional coaching to-
Okay, so that is, those instructional coaches don't have any bearing on-
They're, they're, so they will work with teachers on, and they may be teaching reading when they're doing it, but theirs is more on, on general instructional practice and pedagogy. Our reading specialists are specifically coaching them on the instruction of reading and the improvement of student reading data.
And then those instructional coaches and the reading specialists, is there some prioritization around putting them in front of the students who need them the most?
So the reading specialist, the requirement is to have, those, we follow the SOQ requirements for those. Now, and we overstaff those a bit, because they're done by number as well-
Right.
-of students. So, you, you know, those we have in, in place already. The instructional coaches are done specifically every year, they're reset based off need, academic need of schools.
And is, it is this type of data part of what feeds into that determination of academic need?
Absolutely. The SOL and STAR data, we look at those in the spring, and we start to decide, you know, where, where our students need it, or where the instructional coaches need it the most.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I have one question. Participation rate. What is our participation goal rate?
For STAR?
For STAR?
Uh, we try to stay the ninety-five percent participation rate, and I, I don't have the exact number for me, but we are, we are right close with, with our participation rate. I think in the fall, we were at like ninety-two, ninety-three percent. And the, the reason wasn't ninety-five, was that was the federal SOL requirement, so we try to really enforce that. Just may.
Is there any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Poehl.
My pleasure.
Board members, we're going to move on to three point zero two, Dr. Burtsong.
Thank you, Chair Buffalo. This afternoon, or this evening, we have an update to share with you related to the Booker T. Washington STEAM program. It's our first year of implementation with our freshmen. And so this evening, Principal Dion Gardner is here to present some information. I think Dr. Poehl will introduce, introduce Principal Gardner, and then we'll get started.
All right, good evening again, Madam Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, Dr. Burtsong. I'm here this evening with Mr. Garner, the proud principal of Booker T. Washington High School, to provide you with a STEAM program update. And this afternoon, Mr. Garner will provide an overview pertaining to professional development, courses, some field trips, pathway selection for students, and community partnerships. And at this time, I'm going to turn it right over to Mr. Garner.
With his Booker T. sweater on, nice. Welcome.
Well, good evening, good evening, Dr. Uh, Dr., Chairwoman Buffalo, Dr. Burtsong, Vice Chair Dr. Uh, Dr. Gabriel, and all the STEAM board members. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to be able to present, just briefly, an update on our STEAM program, our initiative, the work we're doing at Booker T. Washington High School. As you may recall, the last update we presented was in June two thousand twenty-four. And during that presentation, we were able to share some key ideas in terms of implementation and preparation for the work, to include PD opportunities, curriculum brainstorming, some site visits to current STEAM schools outside of our state, and have some concrete plans for implementation. Relative to professional development, we have retooled our Booker T. Washington STEAM leadership team, where we had a group of, of the selected individuals to give us insight to brainstorm what this would look like at Booker T. Washington. Since then, we've retooled that team to narrow down to the people who are really, really interested in the work, in terms of providing ideas and resources, and then also being a part of planning and preparing the implementation of the STEAM work throughout the building and within our freshman orientation model called Booker Prep, and we'll talk about that later. These teachers have played an integral part in defining and refining the career pathways, and providing form to the STEAM skeleton. And I do want to take an opportunity to recognize Mrs. Tressie Moore, she's our chair, she's not here this evening, but she is our chair of the, our CT department at Booker T. Washington. She's kind of my, my designee in terms of taking on a core leadership role in the implementation of STEAM, monitoring, and, and just offering suggestions and input and direct support to our freshman Booker Prep teachers. So I did want to give her that accolade, even in her absence. She's shown that natural passion for the work, and she's demonstrated commitment to the success. So in keeping with our district-wide practices, the STEAM leadership team is undergoing a book study of the work entitled Project-Based Learning Handbook. Circling back to the team's site visit to Tennessee, Cleveland, Tennessee, in April of this, of this year, we learned that STEAM is more than just science, technology, engineering, building. It's the approach to which we implement those concepts and how we teach those concepts. We learned at Walker Valley High School, that the idea of, of approaching a STEAM initiative is based on passion-based learning, project-based learning, and problem-based learning. And because of that, this book, Project-Based Learning Handbook, has been integral, or will continue to be integral, in the work that we're doing to have a true PLC model centered on the STEAM work. We know that science and technology are the vehicles to deliver PBL, and the book study adds to this individual skill set, the individuals being the teachers, and allowing the implementation of STEAM to be focused in the right direction. And again, keeping with district priorities and practices, monthly power planning sessions have been hosted and facilitated by our Office of Curriculum and Instruction. And these sessions help to formalize our school's approach to the STEAM curriculum development. And it's also important to note that the curriculum has been developed, but as it is taught, we make necessary changes to provide that best implementation and experience for the students. Currently, the cornerstone piece of our STEAM work to date has been the creation of the Booker Prep course. This course is not in the original design or plan or model for STEAM at Booker T. Washington. And again, your PD dollars are, are working for us, in, in that it's an outgrowth of our site visits to Tennessee. At, while in Tennessee, a team of, of four other teachers and myself, we walked, and we toured, and we interviewed, and we talked to students and faculty members and administration, and we found that just kind of jumping into the STEAM work was not necessarily the best practice way. So there was a transition piece, and they called it Freshman Academy. Where in Freshman Academy, it was an opportunity for students to become acclimated to the high school work, to become acclimated to the STEAM work, and then understand the end goal, which is to have a career pathway, with some solid credentialing after that. So because of time, we wanted to be able to kind of model that in a practical and realistic sense, ergo, the Booker Prep course. This came out of a work that we took, that we took part in in June, at our, a three-day STEAM retreat at Old Main University. And in that Booker Prep course, it's an opportunity for them to kind of, for them, meaning students, to define and refine their interests and select the career pathway, after being exposed to field trips, guest speakers, all of those areas, high school life, becoming acclimated to being a high school student, working, being organized and diligent in their work. And some of the topics in this course are communication and leadership, introduction to STEAM, so they know what is this thing called STEAM that we're a part of, and an introduction to the career pathways. And the goal is to plan a Booker one-on-one module for the coming twenty-five, twenty-six school year that will incorporate the rich history and culture of the school, to include a study on Booker T. Washington High School, historical tenants, and, 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 and historical tenants of the school, and we plan to call on some NOTA alumni to help us develop that, giving them a significant seat at the table, helping them continue to feel like they are a part of the Booker T. culture.
That's great.
The end goal of the STEAM work is school-wide integration of the STEAM model. This means that courses will, will integrate not just STEAM principles and components, but will approach those, their coursework through that problem-based, passion-based, and performance-based perspective. And just hearing some of the work that was, that was mentioned earlier, the idea of the problem-based practices, it'll be a great alignment to, to what I know that we're doing as a district, in terms of making sure that we are completely aligned, and we're working on the goals that the district has set forth for us, as relates to state priorities, funding practices, et cetera. And as we continue to put these systems in place to support, support and solidify that integration, we're going to continue to call on our curriculum leaders to promote seamless and salient connections between STEAM and the SOL objectives, because we do know at the end of the day, how do the students do well on those attested areas? So how do we infuse project-based and passion-based and problem-based learning to ensure that we're still meeting the objectives that have been set forth by the state? So we keep all this in mind as we're going. Ergo, that monitoring and adjusting as we implement the curriculum. Keep in mind that the implementation of the STEAM work is a gradual process, where cohorts are introduced year by year to the STEAM model. The beginning of school year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, which is tomorrow, will be the first year of full implementation of the STEAM work, where all students will be involved in the career pathways work and STEAM curriculum across all the content areas. Additionally, the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year will see the first set of culminating experiences, as well as the first set of students who could graduate with a concrete and, and tangible credential relevant to their chosen career pathway. It's almost their major as they graduate high school. Our goal is always to introduce STEAM to all students at all times. So even though we are not officially addressing juniors and seniors in the STEAM work, if there are relevant opportunities, we don't deny them that, that exposure and those experiences. To this end, we have engaged in some STEAM and career pathway-driven activities. You'll see here in the PowerPoint, we have, if you can make up Ms. Vadette Spelman under the STEAM field trips title, we had a number of our students in our CDP and autism program. And we wanted to highlight this, this particular trip, because we want to show how we're infusing or exposing all of our students, regardless of ability level or cognitive level, to the benefits of being in a STEAM-infused, centered school. Here, Ms. Vadette Spelman and Cynthia Bennett took a group of these students, CDP and autism students, to attend the agriculture and natural resource horticulture class in Hampton. Students were introduced to gardening, growing crops, and how to best care for plant life. Beginning in October, Mr. Ed Williams, an art teacher, took advantage of an opportunity with the NASA Hunch Program, where students are involved in project-based learning in various areas such as construction, culinary arts and artwork, and currently, those students are involved in developing, I believe, a commercial or a video that displays some of the art that represents aerospace technology. So he's been working really, really hard with a small group of students that are doing that work as a springboard to even future work. So we're excited about the things that he's going to do with that particular program. And in this month, here, Mr. Isaac Morrow, who's the owner of the company Boards by Q, a charcuterie board specialist, will deliver a talk and demonstration around, around his own story about how he began his own business to support and advance the hospitality and culinary arts pathways. So we're doing a lot of good things in those areas. And again, always trying to make sure that what we put together is practical and realistic and sustainable, but at the same time, we want things that are outside of the box kind of thing. So not our regular worksheets, classroom, et cetera, but things that are going to be different, and that will be impactful to our students. Dr. John Hattie, NOTA educational theorist, discusses the importance of visible teaching and learning. When one enters a classroom, student engagement should be evident, and the outcomes of that engagement should also be evident. Given this, a STEAM night is being planned for the month of May two thousand twenty-five. Of course, everyone will be invited to that particular opportunity. This STEAM night will be a public display of teaching and learning in our Booker Prep class and surrounding our career, career pathways. The STEAM night will be one of a number of culminating activities for year one of the work, and will serve as a bridge to year two. Incorporated in this night will be a STEAM career fair, which will be our second career fair. We actually had one last year. They kind of springboard into this work, so we hope to have a bigger and better opportunity with more vendors, if you will, to be a part of, of that career fair. An introduction to incoming freshmen to continue to bridge the gap between middle and high school, and networking with corporate and community partners amongst, are amongst some of our planned activities. So here are our pathways in the future courses. Through the thorough discussion and research, our team decided on six career pathways based on the recommendations made by our, our school board in the initial proposal. And these areas are specific, but they're broad enough to allow some freedom of thought and discovery within the particular pathway. And I will share, again, the Tennessee's trip was, was a very fruitful and beneficial trip, because it allowed us to see the importance of having specific pathways that allowed that latitude of growth, but it helped focus the work that students would undergo. So we appreciate the opportunity to be able to go to Tennessee, and we look forward to more, more opportunities like that. So our pathways are cybersecurity, environmental technology and research, hospitality and tourism, human services, maritime and aerospace technology, and you'll see how those, even though maritime and aerospace are kind of, they're in, they're different planes, but the technology that's involved in both is what brings them together, that's why they're in one pathway. Multimedia arts for commercial design. The instructional model involves an introduction to the coursework in that particular pathway, with subsequent and more advanced courses in the third and fourth years of high school. So the first year of high school would be the Booker Prep class, that freshman orientation. Then in year two would be your intro to culinary arts, intro to cybersecurity, with our more advanced courses taking place at the junior, senior year, at junior, senior levels. And then, of course, we're going to expose our students to partnerships with TCC and NTC. There's no need to recreate a wheel that's already there and rolling. So we're going to use what we already have here in terms of the great work here in Norfolk Public Schools, to expose our students to these pathways at higher levels. So career pathway selection is going to be embedded in the Booker Prep course. So it won't be this separate and apart, a, a, a module or thing that will happen. It's a part of the curriculum and work. Students will choose their pathways and select their STEAM courses for their second year as a part of the Booker Prep curriculum during the winter of twenty-four, twenty-five. So that's happening as, getting ready to happen as we speak. I just got an email yesterday from one of our counselors, asking about the career pathways and what the students knew and where they were in their course. So we're excited about that impending work. This is done under the guidance of the student professional school counselor. And it is important to note that the Academy of Arts remains focused on exposing students to the fine arts to deepen their proficiency and love for the arts. We always want to ensure that the arts are not left out, but we talk about the A in STEAM, it's more still about arts for that commercial designing piece, and we look at the Academy of Arts, exposing students for the purity and love of the arts. Community partnerships and EELC connections. So we'll continue to forge our partnerships with what we will call, or soon call, the STEAM community, as we work on having partnerships, business, community, and even philanthropic partnerships. We want to ensure that we give them a label, a nomenclature, so that way when we refer to them, we'll know who we're talking about and who we're talking to. So they'll be soon, so they'll soon to be, come to know as our STEAM community. This will serve as a network of businesses, organizations, and individuals who have contributed to the Booker T. Washington High School STEAM work. Some partnerships already include NASA, NSU, Boards by Q, and NOTA alumni and community members. We're particularly excited about a partnership between Booker T. and the Norfolk Department of Stormwater Risk Management through the school's EELC network, thank you to Dr. White and Ms. Jerry Smith, and connecting with that department. We're planning a STEAM-driven parent-student engagement event that gives families the opportunities to kind of come in and get in more insight into how stormwater risk management works. It's, it sounds very exciting. It's going to be a big map on the floor in the gym, and people can actually walk through the city on this map and understand the goods and the bads, and positives and negatives of how stormwater actually works and how it's managed, and what the risks are throughout the course of, throughout the, the landscape of the city. So we're excited about exposing students to that through some talks initially, and then having parents to be involved. And with our EELC connections, we're really, really focused in this, you see our four pillars there. And one is, is we are working on our, one of our pillars, which is extended and enrichment learning opportunities through clubs and organizations, and where we can be STEAM-y, if that makes sense, we definitely incorporate that work, but we're looking at the family and community engagement piece. but we're looking at the family and community engagement piece. Every time we have the opportunity to incorporate families and communities in the work we do. So that way, it's a holistic view of what the STEAM work is, giving parents an opportunity to see what their students are doing firsthand. So our overall goal, the overall goal remains unchanged. Booker T. Washington High School, through the implementation of this work, we want to expose our students to a robust curriculum that uses STEAM as a vehicle for career exploration. Bottom line. Problem-based, passion-based, and project-based learning are the instructional avenues to promote the three E framework. Here's our connection to some of the, that we have to do in terms of being in line with our federal, kind of our federal accountability system. We're promoting the three E framework, which mean, meaning being enrolled in a college after graduation, enlisting in the military, or being employed in a high-wage, high-demand job after graduation. Every Booker T. Washington High School graduate will have a tangible credential that will support their post-secondary plans. And we want to be able to not guess what students are going to do, but they have a plan. I even told two students today in separate meetings with them and their parents that what's going to be the plan after graduation? After you have the cookouts and the graduations, the grandma give you $20, you know, and you know how it is. And you have a good time with your friends that night. When you wake up on Monday morning, what's going to be the next step? And we want every student to have that plan and not live in this abyss of unsurity and uncertainty. We want every young man and young lady who walks across Booker T. stage to know that they're going to do something that's going to be employable, a part of the military, or going to the next level in college or post-secondary education. So we thank you so much for the opportunity to present, to give the update, and I apologize for my quick tone. I know I talk kind of fast, so I do apologize. I now stand ready for any questions or comments you may have.
Well, school board members, you've heard the Booker T. presentation update. Dr. Martin?
Thank you, Principal Garner, for your presentation. One of the things that I'm, I'd like to hear more about is, so you've talked about the different areas of the, what STEAM represents and the different pathways that you're introducing. There's a lot of research that shows that, you know, creativity is, creativity is really important to problem solving and getting people, getting students together, scholars together to, from different backgrounds. And so I'm wondering if you've planned on areas where they can, you know, once they get in, more involved in their, the curriculum, their pathway, if you're going to offer some opportunities for some cross-collaboration so that that, different perspectives, they can learn to work with different perspectives and, because we see right now in technology, I mean, you, pretty soon we'll be growing our own computers, right? So I mean, so all of this is really getting intertwined. And so I, I just am concerned, and I'd like to hear from you, your perspective on how you plan to not only have them master, you know, master a particular area, but also learn to work with others that they may potentially have to work with as, you know, as our technology advances and there's a lot more crossover in the workplace.
Your question is timely, actually, and I didn't say anything about it because we are literally in the planning stations, stages, and I'd be more than happy to share the information with you. A new earth science teacher, Ms. Hillary Thompson, comes to us from Wisconsin. And about a month ago, she said, "Mr. Garner, I want to plan an exchange opportunity between us and Wisconsin." I said, "Wow, that's pretty, that's pretty big. It's lofty." I said, "Well, put it together and, you know, let's, let's see." So before the break, her task was to give me some bullet points, kind of what she was thinking about. I said, "This was, this was good. Let me chew on this." So long story short, we are planning an exchange opportunity and trying to incorporate, and if this makes sense, I'm, I'm working really hard. I don't want things to be like this, on top of this, on top of this, on top of this, on top of this, right? It has to be a true infusion. So whenever there's a program or a project, how is this EELC-esque and Title I-ish and STEAM-like, and how do we bring all these pieces together? So, so to answer, to hopefully address your question, we're looking for an opportunity for students to be able, from Wisconsin, to come to us for a week, three days, either, either during the school year or after the school year, to be able to walk and to tour and to teach and to learn with some of our students. It won't be the entire freshman class or all the earth science students, but just the idea that they have the opportunity to hear from others. The goal is for those students to travel to Wisconsin and to be able to do the exact same thing, so that way they're learning the environmental systems piece, environmental research and technology, but the perspective is different. And it lets, it does a couple of things. One, it just broadens their experience because the world is bigger than Norfolk, Virginia, or even Virginia of the United States. And then it too, number two, it lets them understand that environmental systems research exists in other places. And so that becomes the springboard. For example, if we look at cybersecurity, how does cybersecurity look in terms of US policy and governance versus maybe another country, right? And then, or, let's look at the culinary arts and tourism, hospitality, tourism pathway. How do we do things here in Virginia versus maybe how things are done in Alaska? And so we are looking at the idea of cross-cultural exchanges or even virtual opportunities where we can, you know, who do you know in this state? Who do you know there? And let's bring some folks together to be able to have cross-cultural exchanges to share information, to share ideas, and for students to get a more well-rounded, and my favorite word, robust, experience in STEAM. And so I do appreciate that. So we are looking at opportunities for, for the learning not to take place at 1111 Park Avenue. How do we extend physically, literally, and virtually? Did that address your question? All right. So, so it is on the table. You know, have we put together a curriculum or a set of activities? No. But, but because of the passion-based learning piece, we want to see how we can extend beyond the box and to think and work outside the box. And so the students can exist outside the box because their world is bigger than the box.
But I also think that it can start right in your, in the school building.
Sure.
At, with the four pathways that you've already.
Oh, yes. And, and then, and then a part, a part of that is the, the school-wide infusion of the STEAM process. So, so the STEAM approach of problem-based, passion-based, and, and project-based learning becomes, you see that in the theater class, and you'll see it in the Health 9 class, and you'll see it in the English class. So it's not just about science and techie and technology and industry per se, but the approach. So, yeah, so even within the school building, you're exactly right. So I hear from my Booker Prep teacher or from my intro to cybersecurity teacher what this looks like, but I also kind of see the same work in a different fashion in my theater class, even in my chorus class, in my science class. And so the, the flavoring is different, but the food is the same. I hope I addressed your question.
Mr. Clanton?
Thank you, and thank you, Principal Garner, for the presentation. I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Just to add some additional clarity here. So I see the, the pathways that we have in future courses. So what is the anticipated completion for full rollout of all of these different courses? I mean, I know we've got, so we've got this year one freshman group in and pilot rollout. But you have all of these, I guess there's six different pathways that you presented here. So when will all of those be ready to fully?
I, thank you for your question. Ideally, all six will be ready next year because the, the pathway selection is based on student choice.
Got it.
So as the entire freshman class is, they work, and I'll give you an example, even today, I talked with Ms. Chapman, who's one of our lead Booker Prep teachers. They're in the environmental technology systems coursework right now. And so they're being exposed to each area before getting to the, choosing the pathway, kind of closing it toward the end of the year. So ideally, we'll have work in all six pathways. And, and so now, of course, that will look at, you know, if we have no one to choose cybersecurity, that may not be offered because practically it doesn't, it wouldn't make sense to offer it if no one wants it, but it doesn't go away because we have an incoming group for the following year. And so then, of course, as we monitor and adjust, we may have to retool some pathways. Well, this is just not a popular selection, whatever the this may be at that time. So, but ideally, the plan is for all six to be rolled out with their intro-level courses, more guest speakers, more experiences and opportunities.
So then that dovetails to the other piece that I have. So I know that we had an application or something that went out this year, right? For this first group?
What do you mean, an application?
This is school-wide.
It's school-wide. It's not an academy model, so it's school-wide, all freshmen.
Any student who's going here has his opportunity.
Right.
Okay. Which, I will leave this to those who go forward. Getting to the broader thing, which is creating choice opportunities, because if I'm a student who's zoned to go to Norview High School, but I would like to be a part of this academy because it is more in tune and aligned to my career pathway, how do we get there?
Yeah.
So pushing the envelope to be bold, get rid of this attendance bound, boundaries or whatever else, to create opportunities for students and parents to create choice so that they can follow their career pathways. That, and I'm not saying that's a thing for you.
Not received, not received.
But I, I'm, I just wanted to get clarity as to where we are with this.
Yeah.
The other thing that I had was, I want, and for the benefit of the new colleagues that are coming on this board, there is still a feasibility study that is sitting on a shelf. And that feasibility study is sitting because we had to finish the curriculum. So my question was about when will the curriculum be done? So feasible, we'll have this done by when, when we say again?
So the curriculum and instruction team, they are committed to having this. This was, will be ready for our sophomore kids.
So by next school year?
Oh, absolutely.
So my follow-up to that one was the.
The teachers will need to be trained over the summer, from the spring of this school year.
That's only one component of what I'm, what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is when the professionals from MBA were here, they told us that we could not move forward with the feasibility study until the curriculum was done, meaning that you cannot design the school building until the educational component was done, and that's not their responsibility, that's ours. So if we're saying that next school year that the curriculum is done, new colleagues, board, wherever else, take this feasibility study off the shelf and get moving on the feasibility study because I'm quite sure with what you're trying to do, you may have identified that you need some new labs or some new things to be figured throughout that building.
Figure something.
So I'm just raising that up because we, we've gone through a period of time, so we can just leave that there, that next year, once this curriculum's done, that there is a feasibility that has been paid for, that we need to move forward with Booker T. Washington High School. The last thing I had in that one was, and I'm glad, I love you using the example of the stormwater. I've been kind of, now I'm trying to focus on some new stuff, but, you know, with the city, they're talking about all these job opportunities that are sitting in there. Stormwater management, I'm looking at one right now for a permit specialist. You know, it's $50,000, $1,000, and you've got sign-on bonuses and all those other things. And I just put a charge back to my colleagues as a whole when we start looking around these career pathways and some other things here, that there are opportunities right at our city level and locally that we don't want to overlook because the city's having a hard time trying to fill these positions, but I think there's great opportunities for some of our students. If we can try to get that into the conversation, that these things don't require a four or even a two-year, but the same certifications that I know Ms. Goshen has been talking about and that we, that we come every year with our students, that there are opportunities. But I appreciate everything that have you come in mid-year, have run and gotten this thing running. And I want people to understand that literally, got here in January, six months to, you know, to end out a school year, had a summer, and then be ready for freshmen to come in and have something for them to go. So I think you should be commended along with your team for that. Nothing's perfect, but I'm glad that we're still moving along with this. But I just reiterate that this is one drop in the bucket for what I believe should be a much larger discussion about when we start about school consolidation, whatever that stuff may be, but how do we move Norfolk Public Schools forward and have a better relationship city-side and wherever else, moving forward so that we meet the needs of our workforce and for the city moving forward? So that's my two cents.
Ms. Pasing? And then Mr. Paulson?
Oh, that are.
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Garner.
Sir.
I just have a suggestion on, on one of your pathways, and that's the environmental one.
Okay, yes, sir.
Have you considered working with the Virginia Institute of Marine Science? It's called VIMS.
Yes, oh, yeah, on the Eastern Shore, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yes, sir, it's, it's in there.
CBF, the Chesapeake Bay Foundation? They, they do tours.
Okay.
They, they put on education. These are mostly groups that do education, and they may work for you and they may not, but I would just bring them up.
Yes, yes, sir. I'm, I'm logging.
Okay. Wetlands Watch, which is an environmental advocacy group, they're, they deal with only problems in, in the wetlands area. And then NOAA?
NOAA, yes, right, right down the street, yes.
And then ERP, Elizabeth River Project.
Yes, yep, yes.
All right, good, thank you.
And if you don't mind, I'll ask, I may reach out to you, or can you send me that? I don't want, the Wetlands Watch, one I'm not familiar with.
Okay.
So I would like some more information about that so we can, you know, try to incorporate.
Right. They, they center only on, on wetlands where some of these others, CBF particularly, they're, they cover fish and, and other.
Indeed.
The environment.
And, and if this is connected, I know with that, a Wisconsin exchange, what I'm calling it right now, it, when that happens, we're looking at having our guests to come in to have some watershed experiences. And so I know that's, that's been a large part of our curriculum over the years, since I was a teacher in Hampton and Newport News. So I just know that, that, and even now, I know some of our students, they, they have those experiences. So I'm hoping that that's part of maybe some of the groups that you're, that you're talking about. But, yeah, definitely, I would like that information.
Right. And, and things like the VIMS, they, they have programs that run, unfortunately, in the evenings and on weekends, but where, you know, they can come to you also.
Yes.
But they, but they also give you hands-on tra, experience.
Yes. I appreciate that, yes, sir.
Okay.
I appreciate that, yes, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Pasing?
Sorry. Back to you.
Thank you. So you touched on a little bit of what I wanted to get to, but before I get to that, so big picture, this is a board, you know, for the board, you know, every time we have an ed planning discussion, facilities discussion, programming, new school programming discussion, I'm, big picture, what are we, what are we doing in the district? And how does one program impact another? And, you know, I'm all for choice, expanding this, allowing other students to have the opportunity to access the curriculum. And I, in a, you know, that's something I would really love to see, because I was going to ask about, you know, application, selection process, and what that looks like, because I, I believe we have, and Dr. Burson, correct me if I'm wrong, are we currently allowing, like if an out-of-district student wants to attend Booker T. Washington, are we, for this program?
We have not closed out-of-districts.
Okay.
Booker T.
Okay.
Washington High School.
But specific for the program is what I mean, like.
Well, that's not something that's come up yet, not even with the board. Of course, that would be.
Okay, I thought we had one.
You know, something that would be disclosed to you on a report, like a reason for an out-of-district transfer.
Right, okay, I thought we had one, that's why I'm asking.
Brand-new, and so, no, we haven't explored that, but it's certainly something we would be open to.
Okay, okay. So, you know, I would, would like to hear more of that, but it sounds like right now it's a.
I, I think this is the springboard, like, like Board Member Clanton said, I think this is a springboard for, for that type of work. Right across the water, Hampton has been doing a phenomenal job for a sustained number of years in the academy's model, and, and, and not just a STEAM model in terms of, but I mean, the robotics program has been longstanding since I was a student there in 1995. And, you know, and then they, their culinary arts program in the same building, high school, then with the legal studies and the health study, healthcare studies, and then you have the performing arts at Kicking Town High School. So the model is, it's, it's very much active and alive and well. So this could very well be that springboard, and even in Walker Valley, a, a high school in Tennessee, that's what we saw. We saw where, because of the, the size of the school buildings, you know, I mean, it was a brand-new facility, I mean, a multimillion-dollar facility, and, and that where there was literally a freshman academy hallway, and then there was, there, and then there was the legal studies pathway hallway, and then there was the cybersecurity hallway. And so not to say that we have to duplicate that model, but this starts as a springboard to get to that. the cybersecurity hallway. And so not to say that we have to duplicate that model, but this starts as a springboard to get to that. And so I think success at this level is what will get us to that, o- opening the doors to any student who wants to come to Booker T. to be a part of the STEAM work and/or the Academy of the Arts, just like the IB program at Granby High School, or the Military Sciences Academy, I believe, at, at Lake Taylor High School. So it's, I, I, I very much think it's a very much a possibility.
Right.
Yes.
And I think the intentionality behind it is what is going to be critical, because, you know, when I hear, um, you know, the, the six pathways that you have there, um, and just wondering, you know, how many students would sign up for each pathway, but if you plan for each pathway, you have partnerships with, you know, for instance, what I do want to hear more about, partnerships with Norfolk State with their cybersecurity, like having, you know, where are, has that partnership been established? You know, because I know dual enrollment is part of the plan, like what does the big scope look like, and where are we, um, in terms of getting to that point, if we're rolling this out next year, where are we currently with, with those partnerships? So that day one, you know, if that's the intent, then, like where are we in that process?
Well, and I'll share with you, if I just, as a point of clarification, it's already being rolled out, so we're already in the work and we're already doing that, and, and we are preparing for year one of these, of the intro courses. Fortunately, we have the intro courses kind of already here. Well, in terms, in terms of establishing the partnerships, those would be your guest speakers, the field trips, the experiential activities that will support what happens in the classrooms. And so we are set, we're putting that together kind of now, you, you know, it's, and I, I, my favorite phrase has become, we're building the airplane in the air. And so as we're flying, we're trying to figure out kind of what needs to happen and what needs to occur, to make sure that it's salient and always practical, so that way we're not kind of thinking above our, our means. And I know one of my personal areas of, of improvement in work is that sometimes I am a big thinker, I'm a big, I'm a big, big visionary, like I want to turn the entire first floor into the STEAM lab. I mean, the, all four, well, all four areas, and you know, and because we've had some mention of working with some other organizations, Newport New shipbuilding is one. Nothing concrete, but just possibilities of partnership and having, establishing a maritime lab, and establishing a cybersecurity lab, you know, in various areas, and then kind of replacing and, 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 you know, moving some other folks, but that's, that's the big picture thinking. But in order to get there, we want to be really focused in terms of the true partnerships with our guest speakers and our part, and our funding mechanisms and, uh, site visits and team visits. So like I shared with you earlier, we have a partnership, and I'm calling it a partnership because that's what it is, through the NASA HUNCH program, and HUNCH, it had, it, I don't know what the acronym stands for, forgive me, but I know it's a, it's an opportunity where students in various schools throughout the state of Virginia have the opportunity to compete and develop projects in culinary arts, in the arts, in media, and in construction that are all aerospace-connected. Mrs. Yolanda Simmons is our contact there, we've been working really, really hard, so we're formulating that partnership. So as we're doing that work, we're saying, hey, can we get a field trip? Oh, sure, come on. So we're just kind of, we're, we're getting ourselves kind of in that door and opening the door. Uh, similarly with Norfolk State University, we haven't gotten into the cybersecurity, uh, portion yet, but we have the mentors from various departments in the school. We're just, we're getting in the door and having true, uh, kind of ground roots up, if that makes sense, uh, partnerships that way. We have a sustainable relationship with the school, and, but I know we have Mr. Jordan here who's definitely going to be a resource. And I, and I know we have some other folks who are alumni in our school building who are resources, and so we're going to use those opportunities to kind of, to get in that door. So that, that's where we are now.
Okay. Okay, and do we still, so Norfolk Public Schools used to have a partnership with the National Science and Math Initiative, the NIMZI? And we used to, so, but, so I was going to ask if we currently had that, uh, that grant, you know, that program that we were able to provide, you know, AP, expand AP opportunities and-
Yeah, so we, we, we haven't had NIMZI for a few years now. Um, actually, Mr. Brady and I talked about it just a few months ago to see if, if it's something we can resurface or not. It's changed a lot and there's some costs involved, so we're looking at it.
Has, and, yeah.
But it is not an active grant force right now, the, the NIMZI portion. Yeah.
So, yeah, so some of the things that they're offering, I noticed, could, um, be useful, so I was curious what sort of partnership we had with them, if, if at all. Um, right, I'll let others ask questions.
Ms. Jordan?
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation and the update. Uh, I just want to say, at least to the, to the board and the administration, I guess my understanding or perhaps misunderstanding was that, um, that the comprehensive STEAM at Booker T. was going to provide for, uh, student choice into, uh, into Booker T. As, as part of the, the fact that we were having, uh, high schools that had different academies, but the opportunity for, for the Booker T. STEAM was a comprehensive STEAM school that was being added to the mix, that would not only serve the existing attendance zone, but would also have seats available for students throughout the city that had, had interest there. So I would just like to encourage the board to go back and revisit that. I, um, pulled up the, the twenty seventeen memo. I didn't, probably can go back and look at the, the resolution, but I'm pretty confident that as part of that educational planning, that's where that grew out of and that it was supposed to provide for, uh, additional opportunities, especially as we were looking at enrollment patterns and, um, and potential seats, seats available. So I just don't want to see that get, get dropped and, uh, and just kind of pushed, pushed along. So, uh, I just hope we can revisit that and take another look at that. On the staffing side, um, can you talk a little bit more about, um, as you see this growing? Any, I want to, maybe mismatch is not the right word, but what, what is it that you are doing now with some intentionality, trying to make sure that you have the staffing with the requisite credentialing and experiences in order to support the curriculum and the coursework that you have in mind?
Good question, and thank you for the question. The courses that, that we've offered, that we've designed and planned are courses that are already taught at Booker T. So we have an Intro to Cybersecurity course. There is an Environmental Science course that's on the books that we can teach. Uh, we do have a Forensic Science one course that kind of slide in, you know, in other areas if we need to. We have Introduction to Culinary Arts. We have Introduction to the Arts. As a matter of fact, through TCC, we have freshmen that are taking a dual enrollment Art One Hundred course and attempt to kind of support them having, uh, uh, associate degrees upon graduation. So the courses that we're offering, they're not brand-new courses that just haven't been out there, we're just kind of, we're funneling them and putting them under this STEAM umbrella to be that, that first year. So in terms of credentialing, these are courses that are already being taught, that have people assigned to them, and so it's just a matter of just the more training to make sure that we're marrying the curriculum of that course with that project-based and, 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 and prob- problem-based, uh, instruction.
Yeah, I'm asking, I appreciate that. I guess I'm trying to get a sense of-
As we expand?
As you expand, as you grow, not, not the base, not where you are now, but as you look at the pathways and the curriculum and the offerings and the, uh, differentiator that will make the Booker T. STEAM program, you know, the demand STEAM program in the state, as you were talking about the different pathways and, um, uh, and opportunities. That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is have you begun that process of really thinking about the match between the teaching skill sets or the instructional skill set that you need that would align with the offerings that you would like to make available to, to students?
I have two answers. The first answer is, I, I would say yes, and I, and, and I, maybe, maybe it was you, Mr. Jordan, and, and at our June meeting, it was mentioned that let's not forget the jewels that we have in our own backyard, which means to use Norfolk State and to use NTC, I mean, I'm saying TCC and NTC.
Right.
Because those courses are already being taught by the qualified professionals. Under the dual enrollment format, the students are being, uh, transported there, there's no need to create a wheel that's already rolling. And, and so, so that's the first answer, the answer is yes. Uh, we already have what's there, it's a matter of pulling it together and making it fit and making it make sense. Now, the second answer would be, as we continue to grow and discuss and plan, there may be some new and fabulous courses that we have not thought of yet. So it would be incumbent upon us to, to propose the courses, to see what's already kind of on the books, if you will, in terms of the state of Virginia, and then find the folks who would be willing to enable to teach those courses at those higher levels. So, so the answer is yes, I think we have it in Norfolk Public Schools, through our already existing partnerships, through the work at Norfolk State, and what a great way for us to expand those partnerships, Norfolk State, even Old Main University, even Virginia Tech through virtual learning, depending on the course.
Yeah.
And, and then, of course, TCC, NTC, et cetera, and then be open enough to, to be able to propose and, 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 and create new courses that'll meet new needs, because our class now won't look like the class in five years.
Right.
So what those needs would be, what those pathways would be, so we're just going to be open to, to that work. In terms of intentionality, the answer is yes. And in, in that three-day planning session, and, and I feel like, and not to put on a sp- I think it was Ms. Goshen who reminded us, hey, don't forget, we have courses that are already on the books that are offered here that we can utilize, not just to springboard, but to be those advanced courses for, for these selections. So, so we have the richness already here. And one thing we learned, again, in Tennessee, was that a lot of what we're doing is already in the pathway, it's already on this course, it's just organizing it and putting that shell around it.
Yeah, and I, and I ask that in part because, you know, we, we see the, uh, HR reports and we know that their school, I think, the last one I recall looking at, that you may have some, uh, vacancies that you were trying to fill in biology, they may be filled now. But I just, I just think it's important that, um, that you consider laying that out now.
Yes, sir.
And that the, uh, and that the board, administration give you the supports that you need and whatever resources that you need to be able to retract and retain that talent. And being able, being able to grow it and not constantly trying to chase behind the ball, so to speak, being, being out in front of that.
Thank you for that, yes, sir.
The last question, maybe somewhat related to that, um, can you explain again, you, you made a comment earlier, I think you were giving it in the context of cybersecurity and student choice and that, um, that the student, um, that the student choice may drive the course offerings, did I understand that correctly?
Yes. So a part of the work is that it, that the initiative has to be student-driven. And, and, and when it's like student-driven, when we look at, we have the six offered pathways, and we want to offer experiences in every pathway, so that way they can make it, students can make an educated choice based on interest, passion, and just overall just excitement about that particular area. You, you know, unlike college where we kind of go and think, I want to major in math, or I want to major in English, I was a pre-law major, I ended up being a Spanish major. You, you know, that, that was, that was the goal. But of course, times change, and people change, and things change. So as opposed to saying, well, here are your prescribed areas, choose one, we're kind of doing that, but we find that if an interest isn't in a particular place, and we find that for a number of years, then we may need to retool and rethink what we offer. Because if students aren't interested in an area, we need to, let, let's find something that is interesting to students, that can be profitable, and that can be marketable for them to be in college, and that can be used in, in a military, in a military, uh, portion. But my point is, cybersecurity was just an example, if there's a particular pathway that, that students show no interest in, why continue to offer and pour resources into that when we can kind of retool and rethink, monitor and adjust?
I'm, I'm not smart enough to, to, to speak to that, but I'll just tell you a, a, a concern I have with, with that description. So in one sense, we are trying to make sure that we are exposing students to new opportunities.
Yes.
We are, you're clearly trying to make connections between what is in demand in the workforce and future opportunities that may be in demand. And so, I don't know how to articulate it, but it just gives me-
No, no, I understand where you're coming from.
Some, some hesitancy around-
Was trying to get at, yeah.
I think, may, maybe it's a, maybe it's a dual path, there's what the students want, and then there's, um, uh, creating the, the knowledge and exposure and the passion so that students will find courses and, and opportunities attractive. And that, that's- I just wrote that down because it, because it caught my attention.
Sure.
And, you know, just as one who has, you know, spent my whole life dealing with, uh, STEM stuff, you know, you're going to ask a whole lot of students today about math, and the answer will be, oh, I don't have any interest in it.
Right.
But once you get the exposure to how can it be applied, what it relates to, the math behind, the math algorithms behind TikTok and all those other kind of things, then it, then it may engender a whole different level of passion, and I would just hate for us to miss the opportunity to spur that, um, creativity and that imagination and just simply base things off of student choice, or student desire, especially in the early, early, early part of the program.
And to your point, it's not a one-and-done, and when I say that, it's like, well, if students don't like it, we chuck it. That, that's not what we're saying at all. We have to make the consideration after, and, and, and mind you, after they have been exposed to all the pathways, through the coursework, through the experiences, guest speakers, so on and so forth, students have an opportunity to choose based on what they've experienced. Our goal is to make those experiences rich experiences, so that way they can have it, make an educated choice. And we're very much aware that, you know, these are fourteen and fifteen-year-olds that are making these selections, and you know, they'll change their mind as, as, you know, as the time changes, and we, we are aware of that. And so there is a level of, uh, um, inflexibility, if that makes sense, that's involved. But if we're finding that there's an area that's not getting any traction, that's what we have to, at the very least, consider. So, so no, I, I don't, and forgive me, I'm not trying to say that, oh, no one likes it, let's get it out of there, but that's some, that's, that qualitative data that we look at as we continue to grow the program.
Thank you.
Dr. Martin?
I just want to, um, going off of what Mr. Jordan was saying, and I, I agree with him on that, that, you know, but, um, I think it's a really good opportunity as we're transitioning, we keep transitioning, is to build that maybe into a summer program, like an orientation summer program, so that to chil- you're not waiting until they start as a freshman, you're, you're getting them, you're getting, they're getting exposure over the summer, and, you know, because I'd hate for them to not be interested and start the school year like, ugh, what am I, what have I got myself into type thing, so.
And long-range vision, again, my, 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 my big thinking would be between, uh, an infusion between high school and middle school, eighth-grade work and a summer transition program, that this would happen there. And it would, that, that this Booker Prep experience would be a continuation of their eighth-grade work. And if I understand, I don't want to misquote, I know in conversation with Ms. Fleming, who's the principal of Ruffner, uh, uh, Academy, is that there is a, a similar type of, of exploratory course, exploratory program. We want to latch on to that and begin the work there, continue it during the summer, as opposed to having a one- or two-day freshman transition experience. Let's make it a rich experience, so that way when selection time comes in December of that, that particular year, students have had all of the opportunities to look at what they want to do going into the next school year. So you, you definitely agree with, yes, ma'am, yes.
Ms. Pasing?
I was going to say, I, I personally really love the idea of the Booker Prep, you know, having that year even to transition to high school itself.
Just a high school life, yeah.
Is, uh, is a big deal for many of our, for stu- all of our students. Um, so, and, and I like the exploratory opportunity at that ninth grade level, you know, but I also, you know, start building that exploration into the middle school programming and, you know, so that they, and of course, you know, it is my hope that we're going to open it up and offer it to anyone who could come in and, um, who has an interest in, you know, the STEAM pathways that are being offered at-
It's the will of the board, we'll make it work.
Yeah, and the other thing is, you know, I'm going to go back to, I, I had picked up on that, uh, too, and when I was asking about the intentionality of the programming around the pathways.
Yes.
And the partnerships with, you know, our higher ed partners and, um, you know, I, I can't stress that enough, that I, I'd like to see that and that the board, you know, really support, um, support and encourage that there is strong intentionality around the pathways, um, and, and to support that. And to build that out now, you know, and if we're not ready, to not put it out there until we are ready.
We're ready.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I appreciate that. Um, all right, that's it, that's it for me, yeah.
Mr. Clanton?
I'm just going to leave this pardon word, um-
Pardon word?
On this particular topic here, because I mean, just hearing the discussion here, I, you know, I'm somewhat disappointed. But I would hope that the board would be bold enough to really, and I think that, Mr. Jordan, going back to some of the stuff that you were talking about, and, and I think you've seen, you've said about, we talked about ed planning. I think that there needs to just be a unified voice from the board to say, at some point, we want to change the way we do education. And-
Trying to say that first.
If it means that we go to a career academy model, or we bring some professional in here to look, I mean, I know that we, we're looking at right now, which really just seems to be about physical structures, but it goes back to the same thing when I'm sitting here thinking about MBA, when they were talking about the feasibility study in Booker T., well, that's not what we do, you got to have the curriculum first, and then we'll come back and, and do the building. To me, I still feel like there's students going to be losing out. If you're not zoned to go to Booker T., or you now have to come before the board, that creates a barrier.
Right.
We need to be removing barriers and creating opportunities, and the only way we do that is by being bold and robust across the division and staying at a high school level. That needs to be the focal point, that create opportunity across, we're creating academies or whatever else, and whoever's model is, but creating academies and that everything moves with that, and as we start talking about school consolidation or whatever else down there, now you've got a, 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 a vision that the board has said that we're going to work towards that will help us make the decisions about what schools and things and how those things align. I just, I, I just can't, and I know we got to get to the other piece, but that's just on my mind and on my heart, that we got to be bold. Um, and I'm sitting here reading, you know, and I don't care if it's not, if it's not the Ford Next Gen Learning, which is what Hampton uses or somebody else's model, there needs to be something, because I already see us right now being, slipping right back into a thing and not seeing that anything of what you're doing, Principal Garner, but I can very easily see us getting back into a per-school-
Yeah.
-thing here and not being bold and students still missing out. We want to keep kids in school? Same thing, all I hear is my nephew's voice, and me, Uncle C, how to, you know, kids, you know, so, school's boring. Well, you know, it's boring because they're not excited about it unless they get into something. Music was my thing, technology was my thing. How do we reach kids? And how do we get them in here and where they want to come to school, and we make that connection? I still didn't hear, and I wasn't going to drag it out here, about the curriculum piece, you know? And I think I heard, um, uh, Ms. Goshen had talked about, we were starting to do that through some of our schools, and I think Delby went through, where if you're doing cybersecurity, then, you know, you're doing the math and your science and social studies, and English teachers are creating lesson plans that dovetail and support. So that, just like, I think what you were just saying, Mr. Jordan, in respect that it piques the attention, well, now it makes it practical and it makes it a real reality. Why I need to care about geometry if I'm doing criminal justice, because I need to map out a crime scene. I just want to say that we got to be bold, and I think we need to look big picture. How do we, you know, how do we address that and come out in a different way? Before you get to the schools and all this other stuff, just bold it big time, at that level, so I'll be quiet.
If I'm a Norview High School student and I want to study cybersecurity.
Or military science.
Or military science, I should be able to, you know, go to Booker T. Washington High School to get, yeah.
But you got to take the first step.
I don't just think it's program, I think it's culture. I think we have to change.
I love discussions, but I get, I...
I almost want to just do a resolution.
We did before, I was sitting, you trying to find it?
I think it's in the resolution.
No, I'm saying that the whole, where we, where we... Where we started was doing just where you were. We were looking at the specialty programs. We did an assessment and analysis of inequities and gaps that existed between the programs. We saw that we had three high schools that were more robust and two high schools that weren't. And being bold in what you described is where we were. And I just would agree with what you said in that, in that as this...
But you have to, you have to create the desire. You have to create the desire, and what I see here is a leader who is creating the desire. You're laying the groundwork. And when you lay that groundwork and you get these students excited, there is no better referral process than one student telling another student, I'm here and I really like what I'm doing and you need to come here. Or a mom to say, my kid is waking up and they want to go to school. And then you start to hear the chitter-chatter. And so what I see here is you're laying the foundational piece, which is very critical. And then these items right here, which it speaks to the bigger vision of where the board wants to go, then you can incorporate that into the process. You've got to create that winning model. And that's what I see you doing with your partnerships and your curriculum and driving that desire. So I think you're on the right track. We just have to put those things in place for when, you know, the students can apply and we can really leap off into that academy model. We have the infrastructure, it's there, you just, we got this.
The community survey that we received a report on in 2023, should the STEAM program be open citywide? Ninety-two point three percent yes, seven point seven percent no. And we've been talking about that from, that's why it caught my attention when it was saying that it wasn't going to be that, because I believe that was always the intent. So we can talk about it in two weeks.
Thank you very much, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much. All right, we are down to our last item.
Someone who's not shy to the podium.
Right.
Yeah, welcome back.
On our Agenda 4.01, school board policy review, Dr. Birdsong.
Yes, so to conclude the evening, our last agenda item is around our cell phone policy for Norfolk Public Schools. As everyone is aware, in July this year, our governor, Governor Youngkin, put forward Executive Order Number 33 and has provided guidance for cell phone free education. Pursuant to this executive order, the administration has worked to develop a policy, a draft policy around cell phone free education within Norfolk Public Schools. This is our second reading today. And so Dr. Poe is, will provide some information related to survey results. And we're happy to receive feedback from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong, and good evening again, everybody. As Dr. Birdsong said, this is our second review. Typically with a second review, there's not a lot of discussion. We just, it's open to the community again. But given the nature of this policy and the amount of feedback we got, we thought it was appropriate to share a little bit more information. So with an anticipated vote at the December business meeting, I wanted to share that as of November 20th, when we closed the survey, just so we can get some data work done to post it in time for the board's requirements, there was 625 comments already at that point. In this overview, you'll notice the overview that was posted, there were five categories. Safety and emergency concerns, which had 61 of the comments. Distraction and academic focus with 98 of the comments. Compromise in moderation with 265 of the comments, which shows you a lot. And really in that area, the majority of the comments were totally get it, don't want it during the classroom, but really want it during hall changes and cafeteria. Unfortunately, Executive Order 33 is very clear, bell to bell, open of school to close of school. So that decision's kind of driven for us. Parental monitoring and trust with 119 of the comments. And then policy criticism and broader issues, just with 82 of the comments. Those are the ones that were just, this, you know, the policy is ridiculous, why would you do this? Kind of comments in there. And then on the bottom of that page, there was a, you know, a graphic that just showed you the percentage of where each of them fell. I'm not planning to go through all 625 comments for the sake of time, but I did give you the overview sheet and just really wanted to bring it back up for a second reading so that the community knows that it's still out there and, you know, comments are still welcome before the vote on the 18th. And I would like to add that a survey has gone to all middle and high school students talking about the implementation of the policy. Because really, you know, if we sent students and said, what do you think about the policy? We know what they're going to say, that we want our cell phones in schools. But it's really around how is the implementation going to be affected? And what do they see as best practice and what feedback can they give us? So we're collecting that information right now.
All right, well, you've heard, let me go, Mr. Clanton, Ms. Basin, and Dr. Gabriel. And Mr. Paulson, and then Mr. Jordan. Okay, let's do this again.
Just go around.
Just go around, Mr. Clanton, we'll come back around this way.
Great, thank you, Chair Buffalo. I just want to make a couple of clarifications up here. I know that the divisions already started rolling out some marketing and then some social things around there. But bell to bell, well, first of all, this is coming from the governor. This is an executive order that may potentially roll into something else from the State Board of Education, but right now it's an executive order. And most importantly is that we're not saying that they can't bring their phones, but that the phone has to be turned off and stored in their backpack, correct?
Correct.
So I know that there's a major concern about whether or not, you know, we hear so many things about active shooters and so many different things like that, and parents are concerned about being able to reach their child. But they would still be able to have this device. So even if we have walkers, like my niece is a walker from Blair, she could still have her device, turn it on on her way home, still be able to track her when she's leaving the school, and that safety measure there. The other thing is that I guess there's been some concern about being able to utilize phones because, like a lot of us were in school, we pulled a calculator out, we didn't have no phones, we had a pager.
Didn't have that.
I didn't go that far back. That was a bad thing, I mean, that wasn't like that, I mean, but.
We had TI-82, to be specific.
But I know that some individuals, because I've heard it about, you know, in some of our buildings, internet is scar, is sporadic, it's, you know, we have some issues there. And so devices have been used to be able to do some things, to get on the internet, to be able to use the calculator function and some other things there. So, but again, the executive order says, no.
Correct.
This is not a Norfolk Public School thing. We're doing this policy to be in conformity with the executive order, correct? Okay, that was mine.
Are you trying to go the other way?
Mr. Paulson?
I noticed that there's no consequences for not complying. Is that going to be in the final draft? Or is this what we're going to see on the 18th?
So this is what you'll see on the 18th, consequences aren't generally in policy, those go in the student handbook. So consequences have been, have been worked on and created. I don't know if I grabbed that document off my desk.
What about, how was, how was the notice of the survey done?
So the, we did a few surveys. So on October, we did an initial survey around the policy. Notice was done through robo calls, through all social media channels that we have. When we did the policy, you know, feedback, then that was done through, again, robo call, social media channels. And now the student survey that we've done, we, social media, and it was also directly emailed to every student through their student email address, too.
Okay, just because of the, the reason I asked the question is the number of responses to this very significant action is very small. And I'm just making sure that we have done, as a board, as a school, done the right thing to get as many people involved as possible because there will be tons of other comments coming after this goes out, for sure.
To add, Mr. Paulson, we've also done PSA. So we've done a public service announcement video that's gone out, we've done it in English and Spanish. And we've asked principals as well to work with students and maybe give a little class time and health pee or something like that, so students have the opportunity to give input as well. And the 625 that we had pooled at this point, it is, with our, the amount of student population, it's a small number. However, when it comes to policy, usually we get about three. So you can tell how much more involved they are and knowledgeable of this policy coming out and about than other policies.
Well, thank you and your staff for your efforts.
Appreciate it.
If the parents are not going to respond, we still need to move forward, so thank you.
My next? Okay. One of, so I have, you know, two high schoolers and who are on their phones constantly. So this is a battle at home as well as in school. I'm really a supporter of this policy and the bell to bell. And I know there was a lot of comments about, well, what about using it in their in their hall time or lunchtime, and I don't agree with that. There's another component, you know, of course, we talked about the educational component, them being on their phones, being distracted. But there's also the mental health and physical health component. And the way that the cell phones are being used in the hallways and in the cafeterias, and I'm not saying by all students, but we did see an increase in bullying, fighting, videoing the fighting, you know, picking fights to be on video, you know, and it's horrific. And a few of us here had attended the VSBA symposium earlier this year, and the statistics were heartbreaking. And the one that stuck out for me was that bullying, was it bullying? Among females was up 146% since 1990, when cell phones became more popular. We have to do something to make sure that these children are safe. And then to the comment of safety in our schools, meaning I'm going to have to get ahold of my student when they're in lockdown. Well, if they're in lockdown and you're calling your student, whatever that threat is, is going to know exactly where your student is, right? And that is not safe. So these are just the areas that are standing out to me. And I 100% support the executive order as written, the policy as we discussed it in the policy committee. And I hope that the rest of my colleagues will as well.
We're going around. We're just going around this way, okay. So I've had some really great conversations with people about this executive order and the suggested policy that we have here. And really, I mean, I think you'd be surprised by what some of our students have to say about it. Not necessarily what you might assume. And so right now, the responses that we have in front of us do not include student...
Oh, they do.
Oh, they do, oh, okay.
It was open for everybody.
Oh, I thought you said you just put it out, okay.
There were several first-person comments, like, I want to keep my phone, and those were clearly students.
Okay, because I know we got some emails, but I just wanted to be sure that that information has already been captured.
Absolutely.
All right. So one of the, one big concern is enforcement, right? So what impact this is going to have on our teachers and administrators in terms of enforcing it? So, you know, we've had a cell phone policy in place. It has no teeth, it has, you know, that it's taken up so much instruction time, instructional time, that teachers just, I think they lost the battle, you know, or chose not to engage in that battle because it was taking away from instructional time. What does enforcement of this look like?
So no matter what, it's going to, it's going to take time. It's going to take time of employees to enforce the policy. So the enforcement goes with the first is a verbal warning and contact to the parents, you know, just put it away. The second is verbal warning, or the second is verbal warning, a written warning, rather, send something home to the parents. Then the third, it gets confiscated by the office and held in the office until a parent comes to pick it up. And that process will continue to be picked up. The, prior to holiday break, there will be information going home to all students and parents that they sign off on. And when a parent has to come get a phone, a cell phone, they, if there's not a signed, you know, understanding of the policy and the enforcement of it, they'll be required to sign off it before they get the phone back. So, you know, it's going to be a matter of, you know, some of this will likely turn into insubordination as well. So it's going to be, it's going to be hard to enforce. I'm not sugarcoating that, it's going to be hard to enforce.
Yeah, so we kind of really don't, no, until we start. I mean, we have, we're starting to see that since you've already, you know, started implementing it. But what do you, can you share what you are hearing from your building principals? And right now, as it relates to the implementation?
So we, some of our high school principals and some of our middle school principals started at the beginning of this year, just kind of foreshadowing where we're going. And, you know, and the toughest parts aren't in the classroom. The toughest parts are in the hallway and cafeteria.
Okay. And have they come back with any suggestions or anything that may not come through in these comments, but, you know, through your principal meetings or?
So we met specifically with high school principals and middle school principals and some elementary school principals when we developed the policy and the consequences for the policy. So we had feedback directly from principals on putting this into place. So it was done with a very collaborative effort.
And does, so I was looking, I was going back to the executive order, does the phone have to be off? Okay, it has to be turned off, not just put away?
Off in a way, and not on your person.
Okay.
And in the backpack.
Well, yeah.
But as soon as, so like, Mr. Clanton, to your point earlier, as soon as the last bell of the day rings, then they can grab it and they can turn it on. Because so many of our students are active in school, they might be going to marching band, might be going to, you know, field hockey or whatever it might be, they might be walking home, whatever it may be. So they want to have that communication, so that's the bell-to-bell part.
And if they're, you need it for instructional purposes, how is that going to work?
So it's off, it's for instructional purposes, it's off. So they have the Chromebooks and the technology in the schools for that.
But certainly if there's a child with an IEP or have a four accommodations plan.
Sure, like a medical need, yeah, that will all be, they'll be accessible. Right, yeah, I guess, you know, and I think we had a student speaker at our last board meeting speak to it. And, you know, I hear it from students all the time also having school, students in the school system, about the different ways that the phone is used in an instructional manner. And so I do have concerns about that. And that is our infrastructure strong enough to do all the things that some of our students are using their phones for, for instructional purposes, before we start putting this in place? So that's a concern. And then the other concern is... And then the other concern is the communication plan around this. Because I know a lot of the comments, you know, there's still clearly a lack of understanding about what the executive order is actually telling us, but I think they also, people need to understand what the consequence of not following the executive order, what that is, if we were to say, we're not gonna put, you know, we're not gonna follow that. So, you know, I'd like to hear more about that, too.
Yeah, so that's, so that's where we've already started with the public service announcements. That's where we're starting with, when the, when the information goes home before the break, it will have the consequences right on it for the parents and the students to sign off on. So, we're starting that, we're starting that already even before the policy's been voted on, just saying this is what the policy's about, and this is where we're going with it. And we'll continue that into the new year, clearly.
And then understanding all the different ways that the phones have been used for instructional purposes and making sure that, you know, I know you're saying they have access to the Chromebooks and they have this and that, but does, making sure that every child truly has access to, you know, a device if needed. And also, you know, the other thing is, the phones aren't going away. I mean, so, we're also missing an opportunity to create digital, you know, the digital safety piece, I think, is critically important. So, you know, I struggle with it because I know those phones are being misused as well, and I know the dangers around it from a mental health standpoint. But I also know that there needs to be, they're not going anywhere. So, there needs to be real intentional effort around digital safety and how to use these phones in a way that's beneficial and not destructive. So, I'd just say that.
Madam Chair, just because it's 6:31, I'd just like to move without objection that we extend another 10 minutes. We got a 6:30 time adjournment.
Okay, I'll second.
I'm sorry, don't want me to take time off. You just, you can do two, three minutes.
We can do a hard stop at 6:45.
6:45.
Okay. Thank you. The cellphone is definitely here to stay, and it's just gonna evolve. And it would be wonderful if we could teach our children and our parents how to use it properly, because there are lots of benefits to the technology that we have in our hand. We have kids using it who have diabetes that help to alert their blood sugar, or it keeps track of the number of steps that they're taking, their water intake. And so, there's lots of benefits for it. But unfortunately, what I have heard loud and clear from lots of teachers and others is that it is such a distraction in the classroom that it is impeding high-quality teaching and learning. And our focus, which is, I believe, the reason for why the governor has come down and, you know, made this decree, is because he wants to be able to say, for all of the schools within Virginia, not just Norfolk Public Schools, because we're going through this, Virginia Beach is going through this, Suffolk, Newport News, we're not unique. But we've got to be able to kind of put some guidelines around the phones. And I think what you have come up with here is, it's a good first step, and I know it's gonna be a work in progress. I would encourage you all to reach back out to your principals and to directly message the students to say, you have something in your email. I really would like for you to send in a response, because we do value their feedback. In fact, I'm gonna go home and make sure that my kids have responded to the survey, because we want to know what they're thinking, because sometimes they have some thoughts that we've never even considered, and they're great thoughts. I would, and you probably have already done this, put some dates on the calendar to revisit the plan once it's been initiated. So, January 1, policy rolls out, and you're gonna get a lot of feedback. And so, have something on the books already with teachers and your Senate group, Dr. Birdsong, and your student advisory group, that says, we want to make sure that we're getting some feedback on this, because I definitely see it as a work in progress. And, let me see. I, I do agree that we need to have a very strong finger on the pulse of the technologies, technology ability and the Wi-Fi capability within each of our buildings. And there are some challenges that we have with buildings built with cinder blocks that I know that we cannot, you know, overcome. But to the extent that we can use any of these maybe one-time funds to really secure up our infrastructure for the technology capability, I definitely see that being a need, because, you know, Desmos is just a calculator that comes to mind that I know that they have to use in middle school and in high school, and they're pulling it up on their phone. And then, of course, the other component to it is all of the, the after-school activities that have apps, the SportsU and the Remind and the Dojo and all of that, to send messages to the students about the activities and things that are, I'm sure there's going to be, or if not, there has already been, discussion about, okay, how are we going to message our students so that way they get information in a timely manner? Because of the athletics and the after-school activities. That's it?
Thank you.
Two things. Yeah, they can use the phone, and we're just.
Oh, right, but I'm saying, like, sometimes we get reminders, you know. You know, such and such, you know, is not working, so the game is gonna be going from this time to this time. And I know they'll send alerts to the parents, but, you know, for the kids.
I'll just have to go back old-school announcements from the main office at the end of the day.
That's right.
Also, I'll quickly say that we talk about the phones, but we also have to talk about any electronic device that connects to the internet. So, there's a lot of kids that are gonna get some of these for Christmas, headphones that connect and those kind of things. So, it's just not just the phone, but actually anything electronic that can connect to the internet. So, all those devices. Mr. Jordan?
Attorney Fox, I'm coming to you. You gotta turn your little light on. Can you just, I know we're referencing the governor's executive order. Can you just remind me again of the executive order in terms of providing guidance versus the executive order being able to make local decisions? Can you just kind of flesh that out for me again?
Ms. Jordan, the executive order, as you say, it directs various state agencies to direct, to issue guidance toward a policy that's essentially the policy that you have in front of you. It doesn't specifically say, that I recall, I've read it a couple times over the last week, doesn't specifically say, no more cellphones in schools. It says, cellphones cause these various problems, mental health problems, educational problems. The people that work for me, I'm directing you to issue this guidance on how to implement a cellphone-free educational policy throughout the Commonwealth. And then there's a longer document issued by the VDOE that gets a little bit more granular, even down to the elementary school, middle school, high school level. I think we've gone with a simplified approach of just saying, bell-to-bell, as Dr. Paul says, which in the guidance is referred to as school day, but essentially the same concept. But in terms of, are you asking, you know, sort of, whose decision is it and where does the authority lie? It's a?
It's the local board, ultimately, I would think. But I just wanted to make sure, just in terms, as it's being referenced, as though the guidance is the guidance. I don't have any real objection to what we're trying to achieve, but I just wanted to get some personal clarity around things that come from the executive office that are guidance documents versus those things that are mandates, like when we had a state of emergency and there were mandates that came, versus guidance that still gives the local school board some flexibility. I just want to make sure.
Much more of a gray area there, Ms. Jordan, I agree with you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Specific to the, to the policy, maybe I'll go to the second item I have first, on the, on this question of enforcement or disciplinary approaches. So, Dr. Paul, I just want to ask you a clarity. So, I thought I heard you say that a letter may go out explaining the enforcement process or the discipline process, and that there may be items put in the code of conduct associated with that. Can you just clarify what the proposed discipline process is?
Sure, sure, sure. So, the first offense is a verbal warning, communicate it with the parent or the guardian, and entered into synergy. The second offense is a written warning, something sent home, communicated with parent or guardian, and again, entered into synergy. On the third offense, the cellphone's confiscated, or the device is confiscated, and it can be returned to the parent at the, or to the student at the end of the school day, entered into synergy. Fourth offense, confiscated, and then it's entered into synergy, but a parent has to pick it up. And then it repeats, the parent has to continually come back to school.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that falls in a regulation to the policy, but it seems to me there should be, as part of this process, the board should be clear on, this is the policy and this is the administrative handling of the process. I hate to say discipline, but administrative handling of it. As I looked at some other examples, like I just happened to pull up Hampton City Schools' procedures that they put out. So, they include a discipline process, and they're very similar to what you described. Some other school divisions have done that. And I'm not sure we should just leave it up to whatever may get placed in the handbook, because typically what gets placed in the handbook, to my frustration, is pretty much the whole policy manual of the school system as relates to student discipline. So, if these, if this process is gonna be attached to the policy, then I think we should attach it to the policy, whether it's in a regulation of implementation of the policy or whether it's in the policy itself, and not leave that to bifurcation. The other thing is, in the policy, I know we include the definitions of the school day and we tie it to the staggers. I would almost recommend that that piece also go into a regulation, 'cause, you know, the staggers are what they are now, and if they change for any reason, it just seems to me that it just adds for additional maintenance, maintenance concern. And then, I notice in some of the school divisions, they spell out that cellphone use is allowed on the school bus. What is, what is our position?
Our is bell-to-bell, so school bus is allowable.
Yeah, so I think whether it's in the, in the communication of it, or whether it gets further identified in the, in the policy, that that piece be clarified. I tend to be libertarian, and, but I get the point behind this, concerns that have been raised about interrupting the instructional time. But I would like to recommend to the board that we have clarity around the discipline process or the administrative process as it relates to the policy, that we consider moving the staggers or that definition to, to the regulation, and that we also clarify around the school bus.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Jordan?
Sure.
You had said originally the table for the staggers. Are you talking about putting all the definitions in the regulation or just the table defining the staggers?
Well, that one caught my attention because I just know that.
Because it could change.
It could just change. And so, I don't know about other folks, I can never remember the staggers anyway. So, but bell-to-bell makes sense to me, school day makes sense to me, but if we're gonna define it down to the stagger, then I'm just saying if we put that in a regulation.
So, keep the definitions here.
Definitions there.
Okay, that's what I want to clarify.
At least that's, that's my thought as I'm looking.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
We can develop regulations before the next board. I can't, well, I.
We passed the policy and you all.
Usually we make you aware of the regulations when the policy's passed. I can, I don't know that I can have it done by tomorrow to be uploaded, because that's the upload date?
All I'm saying is, is that because of all the communication that's been going out, the podcasts and all of that, I just think it's important that we tie it all together now and not promagate the policy, and then some letter goes home and then somebody says, I never saw the letter, it wasn't connected. I think the more we can communicate those expectations across the board and community-wide, the better.
Will do, will do. Thank you for bringing that up. I forgot, Mr. Paulson, we also did a podcast. We did a podcast.
A podcast, thank you.
So, yeah, that, and that could be the conversation around the dinner table over the holidays, get that communication out, because it will be a culture shock come January. I'm sorry, Ms. Clantons, you have a comment?
Let's do 6:45.
All right. Also, well, thank you, Dr. Paul, Dr. Birdsong. So, it is 6:45. Thank you all for very.
Yes, Mr. Paulson?
Yeah.
I think the board should take up the issue of rightsizing the schools in January.
I think, isn't that on the agenda?
We didn't talk about it in the agenda.
I just, this thing came up, and I'd like a little clarification, but I think we need to start the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the order, the school board? All right, this meeting is adjourned.